February 25th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. In accordance with the governor's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This public meeting of these Falmouth zoning board of appeals. Is closed is physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures in place. The meeting is being televised via Falmouth Community Television and real time public comment can be addressed to the board. Utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. For the Zoom login instructions, you can go to www.falmouthma.gov/ zba. I'll introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Hary. I'm the chair of the board. I believe Ken Foreman is the vice chair. I assume he'll be with us shortly. Bob Dugan is the board's clerk. Ed Van Hurin is a full voting member. Scott Zalinski is a full voting member as well. Mary Berry is is an associate member and James Morse is an associate member as well. Noreen Stockman is our zoning administrator. Ashley DeMello is the recording secretary for the night. And from the Falmouth IT department, Justin Shanahan and Adriana Pantano are helping us out. And we also have our friends helping us stream with FCTV. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and we consider requests for special permits, variances and appeals. As provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and from the public. Who's on Oyster? To allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from town departments. And summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative. Will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. This is a reminder that public comment should be directed only at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor, in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. In order to accommodate for public comment. When the time period comes using Zoom. We will ask if there is any public comment out there. We ask you to please press the raised hand icon in the Zoom app. You will be raised and elevated. We will ask you for your name. And address for the record along with any question, comment, or concern you may have. And again, to access Zoom in order to participate in public comment, you can go to www.falmouthma.gov/ zba. From there, again, there is a link to the Zoom virtual software. Okay, and then either closing or continuing the hearing when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision. By motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. And the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date and time. However, after the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussions and decisions, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and making motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. Okay, turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment followed by two continuations for new hearings and a few items on our open meeting items. First up for public comment, this public comment period is meant for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. So if there is anyone out there wishing to speak on something that is not on our agenda. Go ahead and click the raised hand icon. We can elevate you in a moment. If you are participating via Zoom, waiting to give public comment on a hearing, you'll just have to sit back and wait until that appropriate time during the hearing. Not seeing anyone for public comment. We can move on to our continuations. First up, we have application 72-20 Murphy 40 Oyster Pond Road in Falmouth. And if we could please elevate Attorney Kevin Clower, I believe he represents the applicant.
So Mr. Chairman, there's been some additional submittals to the files. I just want to read them into the record.
Sure, go ahead.
So there was a letter of support. And that was from February 23rd and it says, Dear Chairman Hary and members of the Falmouth ZBA. We are writing to express our support for the proposed improvements to 40 Oyster Pond Road that Brendan and Sarah Murphy have been before the board. We are the director butters living at 42 Oyster Pond Road. We are familiar with this property and the surrounding area. The Murphys have shared their plans with us for carrying out the rebuilding of their garage and we have reviewed the application documents. The project appears to be well designed and should be a good fit in the neighborhood. We recommend that the ZBA approve it and that sign sincerely Thomas and Margaret Guecki trustees. And again, they're 42 Oyster Pond Road. Then we have a letter. From the Oyster Pond Environmental Trust. Dear Mr. Hary and members of the Falmouth ZBA, this is dated February 23rd. Oyster Pond Environmental Trust, OPEC, was formed to conserve and protect the natural environment and ecological systems of Oyster Pond. As part of our mission, we monitor activities that could impact natural resources of the watershed of Oyster Pond. Accordingly, we have some concerns regarding the rebuilding of a garage at 40 Oyster Pond Road. The garage is within the 100 foot buffer to a certified vernal pool. A unique type of wetland. Vernal pools are ephemeral wetlands typically full of water in the early spring and can be completely dry by midsummer. These temporary wetlands are home to unique species that depend on them for critical life stages. While living in the surrounding uplands the rest of the year. The unusual duck quacking calls of wood frogs have been heard in this pool and several egg masses of yellow spotted salamanders have also been seen. Both animals depend on this vernal pool to mate and lay their eggs. OPEC is concerned about drainage to the pool. The dry well is uphill and 70 feet from the edge of the pool. Drainage from the dry well could increase and alter the amount of water entering the vernal pool. OPEC also has several other questions. How will the bathroom on the second floor of the new garage be tied into the septic system in front yard? There is the box shown on the first floor of the garage on the architectural plans with a large X shown on the north side of the garage on the other side. Of the storage area. What is this for? And also what is the large box inside of the garage for rectangles? What is this supposed to represent? Thank you for your consideration. We will follow the proceedings with interest and that's sincerely Wendy Bussler. And she's the executive director of the Oyster Pond Environmental Trust. And we do have an email from Jennifer Lincoln from Concom. And this is dated February 23rd. It says, Hi, Noreen. This was to the administrator. I have recently contacted regarding 40 Oyster Pond Road. While attempting to address the concerns of the residents, it came to my attention that the site plan the ZBA has on file. Was recently revised to 1221 to include a small set of stairs. These stairs were not depicted on the site plan that was approved by the Conservation Commission dated October 19th, 2020. The Conservation Commission was not provided the architectural and was unaware of the proposed bathroom or the proposed rinse station. Our concern with the bathroom is how will the bathroom be connected to the septic system? Will they need to trench or add a pump? The rinse station like the stairs would be an increased footprint and will require mitigation plantings. I'm copying the project representative so they can contact the conservation department to address our questions. This may need to be brought back to the commission. Please let me know if you have any questions. That's signed Jennifer Lincoln, the conservation administrator of Falmouth Conservation Commission. And then a letter dated February 25th. Today, and this is from Attorney Kevin Clower. On behalf of the applicants Brendan and Sarah Murphy with a copy of the Longfellow Design and Build. It says regarding special permit application 7220 40 Oyster Pond Road Falmouth. Dear Ms. Stockman, based on the revised referral from the Conservation Commission, the applicants have made a minor modification to the plans. They have removed an area from the rear of the structure on the building plans that was sketched out as a potential future rinse station. And also remove the stairs to the side of the garage. Instead, they will raise the grade slightly to eliminate the need for steps. The site plans have been revised to reflect the removal of those steps as well as showing the connection from the garage to the Title V system. To that end, please find the following and there's references to the revised site plan. October 19th, 2020, the revised floor panel and architecturals. Originally dated September 1st, 2020 with a revision date of February 24th, 2021. In a list of following revisions. A00, A03, A04, A1.1, A1.2, A1.3. And A2.0. Says, I apologize for the timing of this submission, but the referral only came over on Tuesday afternoon. I believe the changes are relatively minor and do not affect the overall design and intent of the application. Please do not hesitate to let me know if there are any questions. And those are all the recent submittals. The only other thing I would say is there was a reference in the letter regarding the revised referral. We do have the email from General Lincoln, but we don't have an actual revised referral from the Conservation Department. Because at this point, I don't know if anything has been submitted back to them or not.
All right, thank you, Bob. And are the voting members the regular voting members? I just don't have that in front of me at the moment.
Yeah, the voting members are all the regular members.
Very good. Okay. Oh, and one other thing. People may be seeing on the bottom of their screens a bit of a closed captioned situation going on there. That's a new feature. That Falmouth IT is trying out tonight. So I thought it was just me with a new default setting. Anyway, we'll turn it over to Attorney Clower.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I joked at the last hearing we had about, you know, Zoom meeting mishaps, but I actually had my first one yesterday, so I'm a little skittish. So I was halfway through my first Zoom meeting of the day yesterday. And I looked down at my screen and noticed my name was Strange Man in all caps. Because the last person to have used my computer was my eight year old son. Which raised a lot of questions as to what he was doing, but I wasn't thrilled that no one had brought it to my attention for the first 15 minutes of the meeting. So I triple checked that my name is correct today.
At least it wasn't a cat filter, right?
It wasn't a cat filter. It could have been much worse. So that digression aside, I'm here tonight representing Brendan and Sarah Murphy, the owners of 40 Oyster Pond Road. As has been discussed, they are seeking to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming garage. We have made some submissions since our last meeting. We revised the plans initially to add the step as had been requested, but based on. Not the revised referrals from Conservation, but the email that came in from Conservation, we did revise that to remove the steps. With the idea that the grade can be changed very slightly to eliminate that need. Thus, the building plans reflected the potential for a rent station down the road. The applicants, based on Conservation's response, aren't going to pursue that now or later. And we so we revised those plans for the building plans. We also met with the building commissioner to confirm that the egress was acceptable. His request was that we label the second floor spaces not to be used for sleeping purposes. And that is not the intent of it is to be used essentially for an office space and additional recreation space. And he said, based on that, he would be comfortable with the egress as as shown and. Other than that. We did add the dry well to the plan and also showed the connection for the for the bathroom to the septic. The only area of that that's within the conservation is the. The. The pad, the opening pad to the garage, which was going to have to be replaced or removed anyways. So it doesn't change the work that's being done within Conservation's area of concern. But I believe that we submitted those plans to address your questions and I think that was everything that came up at the last hearing. So I'd be happy to address any other questions that you might have at this time.
Right. We'll turn it over to board questions. Ed, do you have anything?
I have no questions at this time.
Very good. Mary, anything?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, James?
No questions and I share Attorney Clower's name issue. I had the same problem in district court and my name is the Honorable James Morris after judging moot court.
Ah, congratulations on your appointment.
Judge must have been a bit perplexed.
Bob, anything?
Uh, yeah, just, so have any of the changes been sent over to Conservation Commission?
We we just were able to make these changes today. We'll of course have to comply with anything Conservation requires, but it doesn't. Effectively, there are no changes that are within Conservation's purview. Conservation has to sign off on the building permit though. As part of the building permit process, so we can submit that to Conservation, but there's really no change from what was they they had approved.
So can you, can you just go over the sentence that was used that says that you'd be raising the grade?
Sure, there's going to be a small change to the grade at the rear of that structure.
So if you change the grade, wouldn't that be something that Conservation would be interested in since it's on the side of the wetlands?
It's, I mean, there's, there's, there's normal backfill that's associated with all construction. I don't think it's anything that is going to be problematic because they're mostly concerned with impermeable surfaces. But that being said, we are of course going to meet with whatever requirements, requirements the Conservation Commission has.
Okay, because I know in the original letter, they also said that they wanted, they were interested on how the septic was. Actually being tied in from the back bathroom to the front, because if you're dealing with trenching. They're in the same situation there where you could be, you know, affecting things with grade. That's the only question I, that's the only question I have. The only comment I would make just to the board is that. We do have Mr. Clower's statement regarding the building commissioner, but there is nothing in the file. The referrals that we had requested from the building commission regarding second means of address.
Just in response to the concern about the trenching that is coming out the front of the garage. And is not going to be disturbing any areas that weren't previously being disturbed as part of this project within Conservation's jurisdiction.
Hey, and you're all set, Bob? I know you muted yourself, but you're good.
Yeah, that's all I have right now. Thanks.
Okay, Ken?
So that the the space above the garage is office space?
It's, it counts as a bedroom for Title V purposes, but the intent of it is as additional recreation space, you know, watching TV. And office space. That that is really the what its purpose is.
What, why do you need a shower in the bathroom?
It's, it is a, it's a, it's a small bathroom that's there. I think it's, I don't think having a shower there is problematic. It's, you know, doesn't change the the nature of the plumbing in any significant way. I'm not aware of any reason that they couldn't have a shower for that reason.
But it's not a bedroom.
No, the the intent is not to use it as a bedroom. That's not to say someone couldn't sleep there from time to time, but it's, its primary purpose is not as a bedroom.
So how many bedrooms in the house, main house?
There are four bedrooms in the existing house. They are eliminating one of the existing bedrooms for Title V purposes.
So they, so they will have a four bedroom septic.
Correct.
All right. How are they, how are they eliminating it in the main house? Is it just a case opening?
On the, on the main, on the main plans, and I'm happy to show you, Mr. Foreman. On the. Okay, here. So if I can share my screen momentarily. There is an existing room here where my mouse is, which is labeled as TV room.
I gotta, I gotta minimize a few things here. Okay, go ahead.
So right where my mouse is right here, there's a room labeled TV room. That is the, the existing door frame is to be replaced with a four foot opening.
All right, those are my questions.
Very good. Scott, anything?
Just a little to piggyback on Mr. Foreman's comment, you could see why he, there would be some concern Attorney Clower. It's not, you don't very rarely find a shower in a, in a playroom or an office, so. There would have to be some language in the, in the decision that would reflect that, would you say?
I think that if you wanted to put that in decision that the representation is that it's not going to be a bedroom, which is what we're telling the building commissioner. Which is what he told us to to do for this, for this purpose. I am certainly fine with that.
And that's probably the best we could do to ensure that that would take place, right?
I think so, yes.
I'm fine with that too then. Back to Mr. Chairman.
Scott? And the issues I were, I was going to bring up were already addressed by board comments, so we will turn it to public comments. If there's anyone out there who has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project. Go ahead and click the raised hand icon using the Zoom app and we will elevate you shortly. All right, we do have one person. And again, if there's anyone else out there, go ahead and just hit the raised hand icon and we will get you. Elevated in line after Ms. Wendy Bussler. So if she could be elevated, please. All right, looks like you've been elevated, Wendy. All you need to do is unmute yourself.
Myself and probably start the video too, right? Yeah.
Sure.
Hi, Wendy Bussler, Executive Director, Oyster Pond Environmental Trust. Thank you for this opportunity. I have a question to Mr. Clower. Was the dry well shown on the plans when it went before the Concom? Were they, was that shown on their plans when the, during the December 2nd hearing? Because I'm just, I'm concerned my. About how if there would be more water being diverted to the back of the property that would flow into the vernal pool. And that's why I'm curious if the Concom was aware of the dry well being located back there too.
The dry well was added at the request of the zoning board at the last hearing, so they have not, that was not submitted to Concom at the December 2nd hearing. If, if Jen McKay feels that appropriate, we will, we will of course submit a revised RDA plan. But the dry well, I think, would serve to prevent more water from going back that way. Than anything. And and I think it's worth pointing out that we do have an existing garage here. And what we're doing is replacing it. So we're not adding a ton of additional square footage of roof for water catch, catchment.
But you know, you're collecting it all in one, to one area and putting it in the back of the house, right? It's not what's happening. It's being collected.
The idea is to, the idea is to direct it to that location, yes.
Is there any way, is there any way it can be directed to the front of the, of the house? Is that a possibility? I mean, that way it would take it from going down the slope towards the pool.
I, I think the idea is to take advantage of the natural grade.
Which would go right into the vernal pool.
But well, I think it's worth bearing in mind that the dry well is an underground catch basin, which.
Right, right.
It drains into the ground rather than into the.
Right, right, right. But it will, I mean. I, I don't know what the hydrology is in that area. I don't know if it's going to go, you know. Eventually.
I think, I think that the, the location of the existing garage and the proximity to the house and to the side yard line would prevent it from being done in the front. Because the houses, you know, the house is relatively close as is, as is the side yard line, which is only a three and a half foot setback, 3.8 foot setback. So I don't think that a location in the front yard would would make much sense for that purpose.
But can you, can you please explain a little bit more about how the elevation is going to happen? Because it looks like there's quite a big, at least on the, the plans. That I look, that I happened to look at about an hour ago, the newly submitted plans. How are you going to eliminate the steps by building up?
It's about, it'll be about an eight foot, it was not eight foot, I'm sorry, eight inch difference in grade.
So you're going to bring fill in and fill around there?
I mean, there's going to be fill, I mean, there's going to be dirt being moved on the site because of what's happening anyways. I expect to be able to use the dirt that is there. To accomplish this.
So the whole building will be. Raised up or just the?
No, just, just the, effectively, we'll be creating a step out of fill.
Out of.
Not fill, but out of soil.
And I had a, I had a question too about the plans that were submitted today. You, you show some. Some where the steps had been, there's some rectangles. Shown and I didn't know what those were referring to.
That's great.
That's the grade, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Is it, do you normally submit, does the, the board normally take plans like a few hours before there's a hearing? I'm just curious as to when.
Yes, so we, we usually don't. We usually require plans to come in at least one week before our hearing and that's for the board's benefit. And also for the public's benefit as well.
Okay. Yeah, I was locally, I happened to see these right beforehand.
Typically, we, we do try to adhere to that, but as I said, the, the changes just came over from, or the, the email just came over from. Conservation late on Thursday, well, Tuesday afternoon. So, you know, I had a chance to speak with the client yesterday and have the plans revised and we spoke today about as quickly as we could.
Okay. Well, that, that, those are my comments, please. I'm, I'm, of course, you know, our, our, I'm very sympathetic with what the Murphys are trying to do. You know, I, I understand. Of course, our, our goal with OPEC is to try to protect the resources that are. That, you know. That are part of our, our. Our. Part of our, what we do. So I'm just, want to make sure that the vernal pool is protected and that the. Animals that depend on the vernal pool. Still have a place there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else out there with a question, comment, or concern? Not seeing anyone, but I'll just say it again. Go ahead and click the raised hand icon. And we will get to you shortly. All right, not seeing anyone. Ms. Bussler, if you don't mind dropping yourself back down into the participation list. Thank you and thank you for your questions tonight. Okay, not seeing anyone else. I guess back to the board. Are there any follow up questions from the board?
Yeah, so I have a follow up question regarding that. That area that's going to have a, a grade change where the door is. On the elevation on the architectural. Would you shoot eight two zero? How high is that door shown that's on there now from grade? It just, it, it appears that you would need more than eight inches. You're on, you're on mute.
Oh, you're on mute, Kevin.
Thank you. I was told by the engineer that it is, it's about an eight, eight inch increase. I, I didn't. I'm looking at eight two zero right now. I, I don't, I, I don't, I don't have that scaled out. I don't know the answer to it, but the, the engineer and the designer. Have told us it would be about an eight inch raise to eliminate the need for a step.
So if we're looking at the new plans and now we're looking at a grade change, I think we should have some kind of a reference on the plan that shows. The dimensions. The other thing is if you're doing a grade change there, how does that affect the set of sliders that are shown right now?
I don't think it, yeah, I don't think it does, because you can do it just towards the rear of the structure.
So you can, you can build a grade at that door. How do you stop that grade from sloping towards the slider without some kind of a structure?
And they could have a very small, you know, two block retaining wall if need be. Put a swale. I mean, there's a number of things that could be done. The door could also be lowered if it, and if it was in fact set too high, that door could be lowered slightly.
Any other follow-up questions from the board?
I do.
Go ahead, Scott.
Kevin, with concern to Ms. Bussler's question, I'll form this in a question. You are aware that in the event that you did have trouble going towards the, the vernal pool with that catch basin, you could always go with a so, a solid unit and then run it back the other way to a, to another catch basin away from there if you had to. So you'd be essentially collecting it there and then running it back gravity the other way. That's, I didn't know if you were aware of that.
You, quite, quite honestly, I was not. This is the, the drain, you know, we're, we're, we're talking about drainage systems now that are a little beyond my knowledge of.
No, and that's, and that's why I asked the question, didn't, I didn't want to sound authoritative, but it is possible. The other thing is it's only an eight inch grade change at, at the stoop, right?
That's what I've been told, yes.
Okay, so eight inches, the angle of repose over, what are we talking, three feet?
Between the, between the door and the slider.
Yeah, before, before, before that mound drops off into natural grade, is it what, a three foot circumference around as you said?
Probably, even maybe even a little bit more, maybe closer to five or six, but I'm, I'm, that's speculation.
So the further out you go, the, the more gradual it becomes anyway, right?
Yep.
All right, so, and then you could swale it back the other way coming off of that. Away from the area of concern, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Scott. Ken, did you have anything or?
Yeah, so I, I just trying to, I missed sort of at the very beginning because I just was getting all settled here. The concern of the building commissioner or the egress issue was related to the use of the area above the garage?
He says, we, he, he said that it relates to the intent of the room. If the, if the intent of the room is not to be used for sleeping purposes, he is comfortable with the egress as shown.
Well, what if it is to be used for sleeping purposes?
Then it requires, i- if the primary intent of that room is for sleeping purposes, it would require a different egress.
In what way? You mean?
My understanding is we require a different egress in an area away from the existing egress. So you might.
You mean it would require two egresses or it would just?
You, you, you are required to have, have two egresses generally. Right now, we have, we, we'd need to have a second door downstairs in an area away from the existing door. And his position was if the primary intent of this room is not for sleeping purposes, that he was comfortable with the egress as shown.
Okay, well, I, just speaking personally, I don't buy that it's not for sleeping purposes because it's, I mean, from the point of view of the Board of Health, it's a bedroom and looking at it, it looks like a bedroom and.
At the same time, an office is considered a bedroom under the Board of Health guidelines and.
I know, but as I, as I've said, you know, you've got, you, you don't have a half bath up there. You've got a full bath there. I, no, I don't usually get sweaty when I'm sitting at my computer and require a shower.
You know, working hard enough, Mr. Foreman.
That may be it.
I mean, ultimately, we need to obtain a building permit, and if the building commissioner has an issue with the egress as shown, that's an issue that we'll have to deal with at that time. But I think that the plans were submitted meet, you know, any definition of what we should be required for, for a special permit under the zoning by law.
Yeah, well, I, I, I mean, I, I do believe the zoning board does, I mean, this is a safety issue, right, in the event of fire or something like that.
It's a, it's a building code issue, I think, and, and I think if the building, if the building commissioner, who is the, the building code enforcement officer, is comfortable with it, I think that should be sufficient.
Well, you're entitled to think that.
All right, anything else, Ken?
Nope.
Okay, anyone else, any other follow-up questions for this project? All right, seeing none. Be fair to have a board discussion of the project prior to closing.
Yeah, so I, I have a couple of comments. You know, Jennifer Lincoln did send us the email that said that she did not have plans or they didn't have plans to review that were similar to what we're looking at now. There were some changes done with removal of the step, but now I'm hearing the word change of grade. We're dealing with a unique property because there is a certified vernal pool. We're also being told that the building commissioner was okay with the means of egress, yet we don't have any referral from the building commissioner. And I know we've gone over this before with other hearings that it's fine that the applicant does meet with the building commission, they have a discussion, but unless the building commissioner lays the discussion with us, we don't actually have a referral from the building commissioner. In my opinion, at this point, I think the project should be reviewed by conservation before we make a decision. And I think, I think we should have an answer from the building commissioner before we make a decision. And I agree with Ken regarding the space above the garage. It's being treated as a bedroom. It's being called for bedroom in Title V. I think we have to look at this as that this will have some kind of bedroom use. The trenching even on the septic system was something that was brought up in Jennifer Lincoln's email that that's something they would have to look at. They have to know how this is handled. This isn't a situation where they're just applying to put a garage back where a garage was. They are changing the use and they're extending the space, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable with voting on this tonight. I would rather it be continued and that the Conservation Commission has a chance to review exactly what's being applied to here. We're dealing with one set of plans. And when we're looking at elevations and we're talking about changes in doorways or steps, we have to have a reference point. And the elevations we have in front of us now don't have any reference. I can understand how, you know, Mr. Cloud wouldn't know what the height is of the door because I can't figure out the height of the door either unless we sit and do calculations and I'm not about here to sit and do calculations, so. So I think at this point, we should be looking at a continuance with having the applicant go through conservation and get the building commissioner to give us the information that we requested prior.
I agree. Bob, Ed, you agree? Okay. Mary, I think you had your hand raised?
Yeah, I did. You know, this is a certified vernal pool and it's a very fragile type of a situation that you have. I, I feel, and I know in many cases, there's been construction and it was all very, you know, there was no bad motivation to it. But what happened was something that disturbed the natural environment, especially in these vernal pool situations. And I know we asked in a prior case to have the Concom come to us and talk about it. And while it's wonderful to get a piece of paper with some things on it, I think a full conversation where we can ask questions to our expert in this town is probably something that I would think was useful and would fully support.
All right, thank you, Mary. Let's see. Ken looks indisposed of right now. James, any opinion? Scott?
I just think at a certain point, rather than continuing and continuing and continue these cases, we should ask the applicant at a certain point, are you ready to proceed with a vote on this or not?
Understood.
Present it. Now, attorney Clowers i- i- is, is a lawyer in town. He's done this a hundred times. They have to come to this board and at some point they have to be willing to say, this is how I want to go and we have to be willing to vote. But to continue these things and continue, continue them, they become so convoluted. And then while that's happening, someone thinks of something else and it gets continued again. I think that while it's important to get questions, answers to those questions, at some point, we have got to be ready after a second meeting to be able to vote a hearing on things that have already been discussed and they should have been answered by this meeting by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. Mary, I see you had another contribution. I want to get to Ken and then Attorney Clowers' response.
The only thing I would say, Scott, is I, I understand what you're saying completely and I would agree. The, the thing here is there are brand new plans that we just received and we just received them today. So.
Ask the applicant, are you ready for us to vote this? If not, you know, if they're willing to turn these plans in 10 minutes before the meeting, then they should be willing to, to accept the consequences of doing that.
Well, well.
Otherwise, this is going to continue forever, just like this.
Well, I, while I understand what you're saying, Scott, if I recall in the state law, we actually are not allowed to vote if we haven't fully read and reviewed all of the information that's been provided to us. So I, I mean, I understand what you're saying because I think it puts a lot of pressure on us to do a lot of last minute things and that really isn't a fair situation. And it isn't fair to the public if there are people out there who also are interested in this.
And we continue to require the plans, there's a set of rules to get the plans or fresh plans into us. And as long as there's an excuse every time this happens, we're just kicking the can down the road. At some point, we have to deny one of these projects till it, it, they're applied, there, the, the application is correct and, and, and the format is correct. Otherwise, we're going to continue to accept plans five minutes before these meetings and then extend these, these cases. So at some point, we have to, as a board, put our foot down and, and, and let the applicant know one way or the other how we want them the next time to come in here and then stand up to it. I don't know if anybody else agrees and I'm not looking for a pat on the back or, or, or some kind of a, a, you know, hurrah about it, but this is getting old. The same things every time. They don't come with what they're supposed to come with. Oh, I'm sorry, but it was a last minute thing. How many times have we heard it?
In, in. Understood, Scott. And Attorney Clower, I just want to get to Ken before we, we turn back to you. My apologies, Attorney Clower. Ken, your, your opinion?
Um, you know, I, I hear what, I hear Scott's frustration and I think part of it too is frankly is just, you know, this, with this format, things take longer, you know, stuck in Zoom, unfortunately. But I, but I liked, I, I thought Bob had some really good points. We, we have a contradiction here between what the plans say the use is, what the health, Board of Health says the use, use of that room above the garage is and what the building commissioner requires. And so I think we need to really get him to weigh, weigh in on this. And, you know, and I think Wendy Bussler raised some important points about the vernal pool. This is a sensitive site and so we ought to get some feedback from conservation. In this particular case, I, I think we should continue.
And, and I agree with you, Ken.
Yes.
Attorney Clower?
I have no, I have no objection to a continuance. I, I do, just want to address a few things. We did have the plans that were requested by the board with the changes the board had requested on them submitted i- in a timely manner last week. However, on, on Tuesday afternoon, we received correspondence from Conservation Commission saying that there was an objection to what was shown on those plans. So I thought the best thing to do was to submit new plans rather than coming here with plans that we knew weren't going to be satisfactory for that purpose. I understand and I value the board's time and send this as a volunteer board. I understand you all do this out of a sense of, of duty to the town and I appreciate that very much. But I, I think to say that we should, a, a project should be denied because something comes in later than we would like is, is probably the definition of arbitrary and capricious. I think that we have a situation where there are new questions being raised. We, we addressed the questions that came up at the last hearing. However, in doing so, new questions were presented to us that we felt we had to address. Miss, again, I just want to, I, I want to clarify something because you've said you want, need something in writing from, from the building commissioner, but if the building commissioner states that i- if the egress is satisfactory because it's not, primary purpose is not for sleeping purposes, I think you, I think you next said that you don't buy that it's not for sleeping purposes. So if, if we were to get the building commissioner to agree that the egress is satisfactory, in his opinion, I guess my question is, does that, does it still leave that question of, I, I don't know that we'll have addressed your concern, but we will have addressed his. And what I don't want to have happen is for us to, to obtain that determination from him if, if we can. And then for the board to say, well, we don't think that's the, the actual purpose of it. So I, I just want to clarify so that when we do come back, we hopefully have all of these things addressed.
So in that case, Kevin, I would say that you need to get a second means of egress as used as a bedroom. It's got a full, it's got a full bath. You've made statements tonight that it, it, it'll probably be used as sleeping area. It's looking, they've looked at it as Title V. I mean, you're asking, so I'm trying to give you your answer. So they're, they're looking at it as Title V is the number of bedrooms that are, that are in the structure. And that's why you remove the bedroom from the main house, because this is actually filling in as a bedroom if they decide to work it. So I, I, I would go as if it was a bedroom. My, my biggest issue is that it's, it's, it's easy, not easy, but it's, it's great that you're having these conversations with the building commissioner and you're having, you know, these discussions and working out what you need. The problem is we are not getting anything from the building commissioner and we've had issues in the past where statements have been made that, you know, someone's met with the department head and this is the answer that we get that it's fine. And then after the fact, I personally has found out that wasn't the discussions going around. So I don't feel comfortable anymore just getting this secondhand knowledge that we have to base what a department heads says on a meeting that nobody attended. I really think it's up to the department head to come to us and say, if this is what we need, they need to send us the information. Without that, we just don't have enough to go on. If, if something was ever appealed and they said to us, how did you verify that this was allowed by the building department? And our answer is, well, the applicant told me that's what the building department said. The first thing someone's going to say to you is, well, what did the building department, well, they didn't tell us anything. We went on, you know, secondhand information. So if you, if you want something from the building department to be submitted, have the building commissioner submit something directly to the zoning board based on sleeping area that that's what's required, you know, for the means of egress. On another statement you made about, you know, you did changes and you thought this is what the board wanted in our last discussion, it was noted that the Conservation Commission did not see these items in the plan. So when you've realized that and you're extremely experienced, I, I can't imagine you would think that we wouldn't have a comment and why wouldn't you have conservation, look at the changes you've made versing come to us when you know that we will need the expertise of conservation to let us know, do you see an issue with this? And the same thing with elevations. I mean, I mean, how many projects have you had to submit or come to hearings at this point? I mean, I can't even imagine.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think Mr. Duke's points been made.
So I, I think that sometimes getting a, a statement in writing from the building commissioner is, is, is much more difficult than having a conversation with them. But I, I think it's worth noting that, that a special permit is not, is not a blanket permit to proceed. We still need to obtain a building permit. The building permit still needs to be signed off by the appropriate boards and, and commissions. So I think that, while I understand your point about getting something in writing from the building department, we still need to apply for a building permit, need to meet the building code requirements. I think this might be a part of a larger conversation that, that doesn't need to be held, held in this particular hearing. But I, I think that sometimes we look at a special permit as though it is the kind of a blanket permit and that, and that's not the case because we still need to meet with conservation requirements. We still need to meet with the building, building code. That all said, I, I understand the board's point. I understand the board's frustration. We're happy to accept the continuance and, and try to get a, a statement in writing. However, you know, I, I don't know that we can satisfy a second egress question. I'll have to speak with the design team. That's beyond my, my knowledge. And it just seems that if the building commissioner is comfortable with.
So Kevin, an, an alternative would be make it a half bath. And if you can't, if you, if you can't get the, if you can't get the, I mean, it's, in terms of my support.
I mean, it's fine. In terms of my support, uh, that, that would be.
And that, and that's very helpful to know. So thank you, Mr. Foreman. I appreciate that.
Uh, and now, now I think we should just move on. So I'd like to move that we, uh, continue this.
Second. We'll need, we'll need- We'll need a date for us from Noreen. Just to echo Ken's sentiment.
For specific, uh, input from the building commissioner and conservation, those two things.
Right. And just to echo Ken's sentiment, like for me, it does come down to a question of uh, accommodations available and what's proposed, you know, if, is it a bedroom? Is it not a bedroom? You do have a full bath proposed. Maybe you're looking at cutting it down to a half bath or eliminating the bath altogether. If we do have those questions about, uh, egress and whether it's a bed, bedroom or not. And Noreen, I'm not sure how far out we need to go out in terms of a date for this.
Yeah, um, I know that the conservation administrator is out next week. So I'm not sure that the next date of March 11th would work sufficiently for her to provide what you need. And I think you want a written statement from the building commissioner as well. Um, I guess it would be March 18th.
Okay, so I will move that we, uh, continue for the purposes of getting, uh, input from the building commissioner and, uh, conservation, uh, to March 18th.
Take a second. All right. So motion was made to continue to March 18th made by Ken and seconded by Ed. We'll do a roll call vote. Ed?
Yeah, Dan, you're an I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, I.
Scott?
Rod Solinsky, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So that passes unanimously. That is continued to March 18th.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Attorney.
I, I really do appreciate the conversation around how these things work. And I, I know that, um, like I said, I, I, I'm very cognizant of the board's time and, and the work that everyone puts into it and our intent is never to, to create last minute work, but we are just trying to respond to things as they arise. But thank you all very much.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. All right. So up next, uh, Attorney Clower, I think we have you again. It's application 73-20, DeMello Feldman, 15 Hawthorne Court in Falmouth. And I believe the voting members on this once again are the full voting members. Bob, do we have anything new?
Uh, I'm just checking the file. Actually, if Mr. Clower wants to go, I, I think it's just some middles that he did.
Sure.
On the site plan.
Yep. Attorney Clower, go right ahead.
Good evening again. Uh, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm attorney here in Falmouth, representing Tom DeMello and Cynthia Feldman, uh, the owners of 15 Hawthorne Court. Uh, at our last meeting, there was some discussion relative to, um, the spacing of the garage in the existing porch. Uh, we were able to relocate that, that garage to be, uh, a little bit further away, provide enough room for people to, uh, pass back and forth and to do work within that space. And, uh, and we submitted those plans accordingly. Um, I believe, let me just see if there were any other questions that were raised. Um, I believe that was the only real issue that needed to be addressed and that was, uh, those plans were submitted last week to the board. So I'd be happy to address any questions that, that you might have at this time.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Clower. Board questions? Ed, anything?
No, I'm satisfied with it now.
Very good. Mary?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. James?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, Bob?
No questions.
Ken?
Nothing.
All right. And Scott?
None. Thank you.
All right. And none from me either. Uh, turning to uh, public comment. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Go ahead and click the raised hand icon within the Zoom app and we will get to you shortly. All right. Not seeing anything. So back to the board. Any, any follow-up questions?
Yeah, I just-
Are there follow-up questions? If there were none to begin with?
I just want a quick question. It's probably, it's probably on here, but did they add dry wells to the plan?
You know, I looked at that tonight and I don't see that they did. We, we'd be happy to submit, um, a plan reflecting those dry wells during the pendency of the decision, i- if the, uh, if the board would like.
Yep. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the board? Okay, seeing none. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve with conditions.
A motion to close first?
That'd be better. Motion to close.
All right. Motion to close. Made by Bob and seconded by, seconded by Ed. Thank you, Ed. Roll call vote, Ed?
Yeah, Dan, you're an I.
Okay, Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ken?
And Foreman, I.
Thank you, Ken. Scott?
Scott Solinsky, I.
All right. And TJ Hurry, I. So it's closed. How would the board like to proceed?
So motion approved with conditions.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken. Thank you, Ken. All right. Findings?
All right. I'll start off. Uh, so 240-3C, 240-69E. Uh, they're not conforming to front yard setback at 19.3 feet in lot coverage by structure, which is currently 22.6%. Uh, look to expand the footprint slightly and add a detached garage on the suddenly side of the lot. The applicant did revise plans, uh, to give more space, uh, between the detached garage and the decking area. Uh, property is on town sewer, the LPSSA. Uh, applicant has stated the home will be a four bedroom. Field card did show it as a five bedroom, but on the LPSSA, it is a four bedroom limitation. Uh, property is in flood plain. Um, applicant submitted lot coverage calculations as well as a FEMA worksheet. Uh, decat, detached garage was told to be used for, um, storage use only. Uh, 240-216. That's potentially more detrimental.
Very good. Anything else for findings?
Uh, why don't you just put that they also, they submitted a combined, uh, LPSSA permit showing it had been closed out on February 6th, 2017.
All right. Uh, that's all set for findings, conditions?
Uh, per revised plans, showing the relocation of the garage. Property is limited to a four bedroom. The, uh, uh, subject to dry wells, uh, be added on the plan for stormwater infiltration measures. Uh, subject to section 99.1, fixing of legible numbers, required, uh, time limit for compliance, uh, prior occupancy permit. Uh, subject to, to make a finding that the, uh, the site does slope down towards the public right of way. Uh, even though a, uh, even though a driveway permit won't be required and then make a condition that, uh, we do the erosion and sediment control standards. Uh, ZBA would be put in reference instead of, uh, Department of Public Works. Uh, the location is very tight, but I don't, I, I really don't think there's any way that they can keep all their construction vehicles on site. So maybe just make sure that the main street is passable if they need to park any uh, vehicles close to the street.
Right?
Uh, I don't know if you want to do this as a finding condition, but where it is also already connected to the, uh, the town sewer, if there is any, um, I don't know if there's any need to change or any damage to that connection, um, they would have to contact the wastewater department.
Okay.
Uh, probably put in the, um, the hours of construction that we normally use just because all the properties are really in close proximity to each other.
Sure. And speaking of the sewer, did we mention the bedroom count?
Yeah. So we'll, so we'll condition it on a four bedroom max, which is the max allowable of the sewer. And then in the findings, we've already listed that they've already stated that the house will only be a four bedroom.
Very good.
Um, I don't know if you should put in the conditions or how we handle this, but the field card still shows it as a five. Um, so maybe it doesn't have to be any of it. Maybe our, uh, the administrator could contact the assessors department and just let them know that we've limited the house to a four.
Okay. Anything else for conditions?
Yeah, I'm just seeing if there was any other referrals.
I think the only way you'll be able to get the assessor to change the field card would be through an inspection, but certainly the, um, homeowners can invite the assessor to come out for that.
So why don't we do the, um, why don't we do the clause that we've done on the other ones now that, um, prior to the closing out of the permit that the building department will notify the assessive department that they can have access.
That's good. All right. Anything else for conditions?
Uh, to, 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 this is, I just need a reminder, Noreen, on this. Um, I think this was probably already taken care of, but there was a referral regarding the CONCOM needing to see permission for them, uh, for any activities with the flood zone. Was that already taken care of?
Uh, I can certainly check with them, um, if they need to.
So if not, then we would have to add that in if you find out that that wasn't noted. Um, also, uh, conditioned, the, the water service needs to be inspected and upgraded to a one inch diameter if needed.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, you just may want to list in the finding, it's only a slight increase on, on lot coverage, but whatever that, uh, da, da, da. I guess it's going to be 20, uh, 25 is the proposed. And I guess my only other question would be, I don't know if this is needed or not, but where they're at the limit at 25, do we need any, um, do we need anything checked on the final just to make sure that they haven't gone over the lot coverage?
Uh, you could ask for a certification, um, post-foundation that they have, um, stayed within.
Okay. So put that as a final condition and then put in the findings that they are at the limit of 25%.
Very good. All right. Does that do it for findings and conditions?
All I can think of.
All right. Good job. All right. So, uh, that was a motion by Bob and seconded by Ken, uh, to approve with conditions. Roll call vote, Ed?
Yeah, Dan, you're an I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ken?
And Foreman, I.
Scott?
Rod Solinsky, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So the project passes unanimously with conditions. Attorney Clower, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
All right. So that takes care of our continuations. Moving on to our new public hearings. First, we have application 4-21, Stivaleta trustee, 118 Timothy Bourne Cartway in East Falmouth. And while Bob reads in everything, if we could get Bruce Stivaleta elevated, please.
So application number 004-21, being all persons deemed defective by the Board of Appeals under section 11 of chapter 48 of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that Bruce Stivaleta trustee of Franklin, Mass has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240, 38G, 1B, and 240, 70D of the Code of Falmouth to construct a steel barn exceeding, exceeding 900 square feet in size with a height of 24 feet on subject property known as 118 Timothy Bourne Cartway, East Falmouth, Mass. Referrals, we have a revised referral from, um, engineering. Uh, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Timothy Bourne Cartway is a private right of way in this area. Uh, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Uh, project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters of public rights of way. Dry wells are shown on the proposed plans. All right. The runoff comment stays. There is an update to item four. So I'm going to read you what the original was first. They had put that dry wells are shown on the proposed plan for roofs. A storm drainage retention area is shown on the plans in the southwest corner of the site. There is a swale in the northwest corner of the site directed to the abutting property of Handy Lane, uh, to the abutting Handy property, sorry. Uh, it says, uh, per section 240-112, stormwater management, the design requirements required that a runoff should be recharged within the lot where it originates. And we defer to the board of this, if a waiver should be sought, or this is a alternative location, it'd be acceptable. And they've updated that to say that the revised plans do include an additional stormwater retention area in the northwest corner of the site. Uh, they recommend that section 99.1, which is the posting of legible numbers and time limit for compliance. In addition to the number on the house, they do recommend a number sign be placed at the intersection of the driveway and Timothy Bourne Cartway and also one at the intersection with 126 Timothy Bourne Cartway driveway. Uh, project does not appear to fall within Conservation Commission's jurisdiction and would not be subject to Engineering Division permits. There is a limit of work shown, but no erosion and sediment controls. There should be sediment controls along the north, northern, western, and southern extents of the property, of the project to contain potential erosion during construction and until permanent vegetation is established. Uh, they recommend the following in any approval. Construction of the project shall follow the town soil erosion and sediment control standards. Uh, and the, uh, Department of Public Works Engineering Division should be replaced with zoning board of appeals. Uh, they do recommend that that above condition still be included in any decision. The revised plans include erosion and sediment control plan. Uh, there was a notation here, and I think we can clear this up with the applicant, that there's no drainage calculations provided for sizing the proposed storm runoff retention areas that are shown on the plan. Says the plan showed the limit of work will be demarcated in the field by stakes to be installed along limit of work. Is not clear what this means. Um, is this a snow fence, a silk fence, or stakes spaced out and how far apart? We defer to the board of more information should be included on the plans. An additional sketch be submitted or if it can be covered with some language in the condition. Uh, Water Department, the proposed work includes a well in North Falmouth DPW water. There is an existing eight inch main and hydrants at Timothy Bourne Cartway and Faith's Way. Any future connection into the proposed home would require the eight inch main to be extended beyond the current layout. Uh, from conservation, the project appears to fall outside of conservation jurisdiction. Uh, but they are saying a limit of work should be installed to prevent any activity from intruding on the riverfront area and setback uh, to BVW. We have the engineering comments, but we've already read the provisions. Assessors has no comment. Fire department has no issue. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. Uh, there is one letter of support dated February twenty-first, I mean twenty-fifth, uh, twenty twenty-one from a Bill, uh, Walsack. I am Bill Walsack, owner of one twenty-six Timothy Bourne Cartway, East Falmouth, immediate adjacent to one eighteen Timothy Bourne Cartway. I reviewed the documents pertaining to the special permit request by Bruce Stivela to construct a steel barn on the property near the bog. I am in support of the proposal. And let me just see if the health comments. Okay, from health department. Uh, this is dated today at two oh nine from Scott McGann regarding referral for one eighteen Timothy Bourne Cartway. Both septic systems have been permitted. The property does not have town water as a drinking water well is proposed. Applicant must obtain a well permit and a satisfactory well completion report provided to the health department before any occupancy. That completes the file.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And Mr. Stivela, we have you elevated. All you need to do is unmute yourself.
How you doing, guys?
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, why don't you tell us a little bit about your project and we'll see if we have any questions.
Um, okay. Um, well, this is kind of like my retirement home. This is where I'm going to reside for the rest of my life, hopefully. And, uh, I'm kind of a tinkerer, you know, so, uh, I'm, I'm a carpenter, you know. I, I do a lot of different things to keep myself busy. So, uh, you know, wherever I've been, I've always had a barn or a little workshop or whatever, um, throughout my life. And, uh, so this here, um, again, I, I'm going to put my boat inside, be able to work in my boat. Um, I have a little turning studio that I like to turn bowls and that kind of thing. And I like to do a little carpentry here and there, you know. And, um, and I also have a little lift that I, um, that I put my car up on, you know, change the oil and, and turn the tires and, you know, whatever going wrong with the car or truck or whatever. And, um, the, uh, mezzanine, uh, which is in the, in the barn is for storage. Um, you know, I get a lot of little things that I, I'd throw up there so it doesn't take up space down below. Um, the bathroom is located on the second floor. Um, that's for me because, uh, you know, sometimes I'll be working all of a sudden, you know. Um, but I didn't put it on the first floor because, uh, I did want the mezzanine to put storage stuff up there and, and also not to clutter the first floor in the barn. Uh, the height, uh, is probably because of the lift and, you know, the mezzanine and also, uh, the boat that I'm going to put in there. Um, I'm an avid boater. I love to, you know, I'm, I'm out in the water every weekend. Um, so, um, and I have, um, you know, a fairly large boat. It's like a thirty footer that I, I use, um, every, every day of the weekends. And, um, so, and, and that's the reason why, and you know, it's, it's, uh, the land, the, the reason I bought the land was so I could put a barn. Uh, you know, if you have more than two acres, you know, you're allowed to put a barn up. So that was another reason why I bought the parcel. And, um, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of nice. Um, I don't really have any neighbors except for my, my neighbor out front. He's a wonderful guy. And, um, he's just, uh, I'm, I'm going to be looking forward to him as a neighbor. He's just, uh, uh, I like hanging him out, you know, instant friendship, you know, just one of those type of guys that you just want to hang out with. And, uh, him and I are gonna, you know, uh, you know, share, uh, the front driveway and he's going to help, uh, maintain it with me. So, uh, I don't know. Um, you know, whatever you guys need, I'll, I'll take care of it. I mean, uh, the, the silk fence that runs along the bog here, um, you know, I'll put that up. That's no problem. Um, I don't see any big deal with that. What else? Drainage cals, um, like I can supply those and, and they can be an addendum to, you know, uh, give them to the billing department and, and, uh, as long as he has the cals, I would think you guys would be okay. I'm not sure. The well, uh, I haven't permitted the well yet because, um, I don't want it to get run over yet. You know, there's still some, uh, you know, equipment being moved around, uh, the foundations that's there. Um, so I don't want to run it over. So, but when the time comes to put the well in, um, you know, we'll have it permitted and tested and, and all that stuff before occupancy. What else? The limit of work? Um, that is, was basically just for tree clearing and grading. Um, that's something that I delineated, uh, all the way around. And it goes, um, down the driveway and as you can see, it opens up a little and then goes down the hill and then opens up where the house is and then, um, follows the lot line, um, all the way where you're going to be putting the soap fence. So that's what that limit of work is. It's, it's nothing special. It's, uh, for my use. Uh, so I know where all the trees were cut and, and grading and, and, um, um, that's about it. If you guys got any questions?
Sounds good. We'll see if anyone does have any questions. All right. Ed, anything? No, no questions. Looks like a good little project.
Very good.
Yeah, I just had one question, which is the site plan that I had, and I just wanted to make sure I didn't have a page missing. It says page one of two, and I, I only have one.
Oh, that's the first page of the site plan, Mary?
Yes. Do you guys have a two?
Right. I have site plan one of two, and then it goes to S one. Is that what you have?
That's what I have. I just was curious if we're missing site plan two of two. Maybe it's just a typo.
Yeah. Let's just have a letter. I'm not sure, uh, if there is a page two of two. I know that the.
In answer to Mary's comment, I, I think the updated site plan came through as an email. Uh, cause it came in late, so it, it probably is not in the online packet. Oh, actually it's on the online packet, but it wouldn't be in your, your actual hard copy that was dropped off.
I'm looking at the hard copy. Is that correct?
Right. So that page two is missing from the hard copy, but if I heard Bob correctly, it's, it's on the online version.
Yeah, it's only on the online version, or it was in a separate email. So you don't have it in your hard copy packet.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Anything else, Mary?
Well, obviously I haven't looked at site plan two of two, so.
Mary, um, I, I think what that is, is, uh, it's just a septic plan. Um, that's what that is. Uh, it just shows the septics. That's it. So, uh, that doesn't really have, you know, it shows where the septics are. One in front of the house and there's one in front of the barn. Uh, but that's just for the, the board of health.
Anything else, Mary?
No, not at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mary. All right. James, anything?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Uh, let's see. Bob? Not, we all got rearranged again.
Just a, a quick question on the driveway. So the driveway that's leading to this, I know it says a proposed native dense grade. So, so what is the surface?
Um, that, uh, uh, what I used to bring in was a, uh, what was it? Uh, recycled asphalt. Um, compacted. Um, there's several things to use. You can use, uh, recycled concrete. Um, you can use, uh, gravel.
So Mr. Still a little, when they figure, and I know you have a large acreage anyways, but they would, when they were figuring in the lot coverage for the structures, parking or paving, did they only use the small section that you just have said that that one section will be paved?
Yeah.
All right. And the rest of it's just going to be something permeable, so they don't have to worry about it?
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
It's the only question I have.
Thank you, Bob. Ken?
You're not, uh, you, you said you were retired. Are, are you, you're, you're not planning to use, uh, my question goes to the use. This is a pretty substantial structure. Uh, I'm just wondering if it's just for your use or are you planning some kind of business operation?
You, are you kidding me? I've had enough.
Okay. What did you do?
What do I do?
What did you?
I'm a supervisor, contractor, builder, uh, that kind of thing. But, uh, no, I, you know what? It's just blowing my mind right now. I mean, I'm ready to throw in the, the chip, whatever. I mean, the prices, I, I just bought a two by, two by twelve, right? Sixteen footer. You know how much that thing is? Fifty-five dollars for one sixteen footer. I was like, are you really? Come on, you know?
I've been reading about that.
And you know what? It's no fun building anymore. I'm not enjoying it anymore. You know, back when I was a kid, I loved building, but now it is just, I don't want to do it anymore. I don't have the stress level anymore. My agita.
Okay. All right. I just, in terms of zoning, I just wanted to make sure you were conforming with.
I mean, I'm sixty-three years old. I want to take it easy, you know?
Good for you. Okay. Thank you.
Unbelievable.
Yeah. So the, the reason for Ken's question is that we have zoning bylaws on the books if you're having a home business or anything like that. So we're just making sure you're not doing anything. This is all recreational.
Definitely.
All right. We got rearranged again.
I'll show you how to spin a ball.
Uh, Mr. Stivela, um, with regard to the construction equipment, are those registered? Is that all registered to your, your business now?
Uh, tho- those, those are, uh, under Stivela Corp. They'll be going back to Franklin. Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, my other question is being that we're, we've missed the, uh, second page here. Um, what was approved through, through, uh, the comments by, by, um, the health department for that septic on the garage? Is, is what we're looking at on page one, what was represented with the approval?
Yes, it is.
Did you have to get a variance for that?
No.
So the thirteen foot off the property line there, you don't need a variance for that?
No, I don't. No.
Hey, he told you he didn't?
Uh, it's been approved and paid for and ready to go. Yes, he didn't say anything. Nope.
Cause usually you gotta be twenty feet off or you gotta have a variance with the, uh, the septic. With the, with the leach field. And I'm just curious to know why, why there wasn't a variance on that. But if it's got approval and I, if we had had the second page, I could have looked at it, see if it had been changed, or there was a variance on it, but it's not here, so. Thank you, Mr. Mary.
Thank you, Scott.
I can get you that page, Scott, if you want.
Sure. It, it was an attachment of an email, Scott. I'm, I'm looking at it right now. I'm looking at it right now. It was an attachment in an email.
All right. Is there, is there a thirteen, is there a variance for the thirteen feet off the property line for the, for the leach field?
I would have to zoom in and look some more. I'm, I'm.
TJ, could you, could you share your screen on that?
I'm looking on my phone right now, so I.
You know, let me have, what, what I'll do is, is I'll have Ashley in the office share her screen of that form so everybody can see it.
Sure.
I just never seen, uh, never mind. I, I, if, if it's approved, it's approved. I mean, he's the boss, but.
Oh, no, he was pretty.
Down there and see thirteen feet off the property line.
Yeah, we walked, we walked it. He, he showed me what he wanted, um, what kind of tanks and all that kind of stuff.
So there was no plan?
Excuse me?
Do you have a, do you have a plan? Do you have a, a, a certified in, uh, a septic plan?
Yes, I do.
All right.
There it is.
That shows the sideline of it.
Yeah. So that's the, that was the missing page two that Mary was curious about.
But it, does it show a topical on, on, does it show a top view of it where, or, or a line anywhere where it gives them variance from that? There it is right there.
You're talking about the, the top view? So that would be page one.
Left of the property that showed that, that, uh, depicts the, right there, you're still only thirteen feet off the property line. I was just curious why there wasn't a variance for that, but.
Yeah.
This thing isn't built, right?
No.
Is there any reason not just to move it? I mean, you got a ton of space.
Oh God, I can move it over a little. Yeah. I just didn't want to run over it though.
Right. But, you know, we're talking six feet, I think.
Yeah.
It's in the driveway anyway, isn't it?
Yeah.
Then it should be H twenty by, by design.
Oh, it will be. Yeah. Oh, God, yeah. Yeah.
Then there should be.
But you'd make Scott happy if you moved it, I think.
No, no, I'm just curious why we, there was.
No problem. I mean, what do you want? I'll do. I mean, you know, but that's going to be H twenty. No, I, I'm not gonna, those are heavy duty tanks. Uh, uh, don't deal with anything else, believe me.
That's all I have. Thank you, Sam.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Uh, anyone else? I do have a few questions. I'm just, we keep getting rearranged. So I'm just making sure no one else has any of the questions. All right. I think we're good. All right. Uh, so Mr. Stivela, that's second floor proposed. No, no sleeping arrangements. And again, with these questions, there, we're all hinting at other bylaws here. Uh, and it's, uh, slab construction.
Yes.
And the, I know the home itself is being proposed, but that is a by right use and that wouldn't be before the board.
Nope.
Very good. And you said you turn bowls. Is that pottery?
Uh, no, it's, it's actually, I, I, uh, I cut a log in, in half.
Oh, okay.
And then what I do, like a, I don't know, about twelve inches or something like that, I'll cut it in half. And then I'll draw a circle on that half, the, the cut half. And then I, I, I cut it with a bandsaw, right? And then I put it on a lathe and then I turn it into a bowl.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's so many applications with it. It's really, uh, interesting stuff.
So we can get salad bowls.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. You give me the piece of wood, I'll make you a salad bowl.
It's gotta be under fifty dollars.
Reason why I asked is my, my fiance is a potter and she always uses the term throwing bowls, so I.
Yeah.
No, didn't know if you were a potter, but no, a different medium.
You know what's really neat is, is you can go to this, uh, carpentry store like in Walpole, di- different place of Massachusetts. And you can buy different kinds of wood from all over the world. And some of them absolutely, when you turn them, they are gorgeous. I mean, it's just the quality of the wood. Uh, you get it from Brazil, Hawaii, uh, Asia, uh, Africa. And it is something, it's just amazing what you can do. And no designer is all alike. It's, they're all different. And so that's what makes it interesting.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
So we will turn it to, uh, public comment if there is any, uh, any question, comment or concern. Go ahead and click the raised hand icon and we will get you in a moment.
So I did have one question, but for the administrator.
Go ahead, Bob. I'm not seeing anything for public comment.
With the size of the property in this zone, it's, it's not subdivisible, correct?
Uh, I wouldn't expect so. I, I mean, I certainly don't think there's any intention for that.
No, no. I'm not gonna build a house and, and sell, sell it. No. This is like a very private piece of property, you know? But, uh, no, I don't think it's subdivisible, but, you know, like if you wanted to build a carriage house or a bar, you know, a horse barn or something like that, you could do that. But, uh, not for sale. Is that what your question was?
Yeah, it's of these properties, if they're not subdivitable or in these zones, they, they also can't be used as multifamily. So we usually, um, put a condition in that the use of the. so we usually um, put a condition in that the use of the property remains as single family use.
Right. My family.
All right, so again, I'm not seeing any, uh, any hands raised for public comments, so back to the board with any follow-up questions, and maybe we can wrap this up. All right, not seeing any, would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion closed.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Second by Ed, roll call vote, and Ken?
Informant I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott's let's go.
And TJ Hurry, I, so the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. What would be the board's pleasure?
Uh, motion to approve with conditions.
Very good, thank you, Ken, Ken with the motion, and I'll give the second to Ed. Findings?
So let's see, what were the appropriate provisions, uh?
Let's start you off.
Go ahead, Robert, you're good at this part, I, I just have one thing I wanna add, but go ahead.
All right, so findings, so two forty dash thirty-eight G one B, two forty dash seventy D, two forty dash two sixteen, uh, they're proposing a forty by forty uh, steel barn, uh, with a mezzanine uh, for boat storage and also containing a lift, a height of twenty-four feet. The height of the structure is because of the use with the mezzanine, boat storage and lift. Property is four point seven nine acres, uh, lot coverage by structures is only running three point oh seven percent. Structures parking and paving, four point five eight percent. Uh, property will not uh, have town water, uh, it will have private well. There were uh, submittals of the septic system that said they've been permitted by the health department, and they do show H twenty tanks. Uh, property uh, is not subdivitable, uh, it will be used as a single family use. Can go from there.
Well, I, the only, so as, uh, so we just wanna modify the plans to move the, uh, you know, the, the septic to, to move their,
Leaching.
Leaching field, twenty, twenty feet, right, from the side lot, from the uh, property line.
So you could put as a finding that the um, the septic currently shows thirteen feet, and applicant is willing to move it uh, twenty feet from the sideline?
Yeah, exactly.
And revise the plans accordingly.
Exactly, otherwise, as per plan.
Go.
All right, anything else?
Um, make a finding that, again, the property does not have town water, as a drinking well is proposed, so the applicant must obtain a well permit and satisfy to well completion report provided to the health department before occupancy, and we can also have that as a condition.
Very good.
No, that's fine. No.
Just mentioned it's slab construction with no sleeping, proposed. Okay, anything else? All right, last call for findings or conditions?
Uh, conditions, so after that condition, so, uh, per the revised plans, per that condition with the uh, health department, we have to include the conditions with the engineering department, uh, including the section ninety-nine one, a fixing of legible numbers and the description of actually where those are to be posted. There were, there were different locations besides the building, they had to be posted in two different locations in the road.
Great.
Um.
We had, we had no problem finding it this morning, Scott, did you?
On me?
You didn't have any problems finding it this morning, did you?
Finding what?
The lot, you know?
No, no, why?
Oh, just, no, I'm just asking, so.
No, those, those are just, uh, that, that's for uh, the fire department, so they.
Oh, okay.
When, when you, you're, you're sharing the driveway with the neighbor.
So we also have to put in the.
Yeah, I'll put two locations, yeah.
But there was no driveway down to where the, the building site was gonna be, it stops right at the end of your house foundation.
Right, yeah.
Couldn't drive down there.
Yeah, but it's a nice walk, you know?
On the findings, also add that the property is located within Born's Pond and with Boy Bay Coastal Bund Overlay District, and as a condition, uh, uh, the erosion sediment control standards, uh, with the zoning board of appeals in place of Department of Public Work. Uh, the revised plans, uh, have to include the erosion sediment control plans also. Uh, also, um, that on page three? Noreen, I don't know if you list this as a finding or condition, but, because the comment from water department isn't that you have to connect, but they do have that as a finding that there is an existing eight inch main in hydrants on Timothy Bourne Carway and Faith's Way. Any future connection to a proposed mo- uh, proposed home would require the eight inch main to be extended beyond the current layout, would you just put that as a finding?
Sure.
Uh, and also as a condition that a um, a limit of work uh, should be installed to prevent any activity from intruding to the riverfront area and setback to BVW.
Yeah, well, that, that limit of work is the uh, the silk fence, the lot line.
Yep, so that has to be put down in advance.
Okay, so you want that dotted line to go right next to the silk fence?
Yeah, yeah, cause Concom's referral is asking that that be put in there, the limit of work order to keep any of the activity back.
Yeah, dotted line, and along, so, got it.
I, I think that's it.
Okay, all right.
Did condition it would only be single family use, correct? I don't remember.
I think so.
Yes, you did.
Done it, yeah.
All right, so if that's everything, that was a motion made by Ken.
A little bit by Ken.
Little bit by Ken, some, some by Bob, all right, so that was a motion by Ken, uh, seconded by Ed, to approve of the project with conditions. Roll call vote, Ed, I'm sorry, Ken?
Informant I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott's let's go.
And TJ Hurry, I, the motion passes unanimously, Mr. Stavala, uh, congratulations, hope you enjoy retirement and your new barn.
Thank you very much, you guys ever wanna drop by and say hello, have a beer with me, drop by?
Oh, it's good, we'll see you then.
All right, see you guys later, thank you very much. All right, bye-bye.
How do we get out?
Uh, IT might be.
I just shut everything off, it's easier.
Oh, dude, okay, I'm just gonna leave.
All right.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Stavala.
Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, could we just take a five-minute break?
Sure, I think that's appropriate, so we will take a five-minute break, and we'll be right back.
hearings, we have application two dash twenty one Celia trustee ten Grove Street in North Falmouth.
So application number zero zero two dash twenty one being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty eight of the Mass General laws. You are hereby notified that Joseph P. Celia trustee of Hanson, Mass has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for modification of special permit number twenty one oh six. Pursuant to sections two forty dash three C of the Code of Falmouth to remove the existing deck to expand living space and construct in addition to the second floor of the single family dwelling. On subject property known as ten Grove Street, North Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. Engineering, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Grove Street is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit from the engineering division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters of public rights way. Where the project falls in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. We defer to the Commission for Stormwater Management and Construction Erosion Controls. We do recommend adding the house number on the side facing Globe Street. Concom. Conservation staff recommends the applicant file for request of determination of applicability with Conservation Commission. Project is located within the zone AE fifteen and appears to be located in setbacks to protected resource areas. Erosion control barriers should be installed and shown on all plans. From the water department, the water service needs to be shown on the plans from the main to the home. The home is currently fed from an eight inch main with a one and a quarter shared service line. This service may need to be renewed from the curb stop to the home. Do the one point two five inch shared service feed, especially if there will be pump plumbing improvements with the second floor addition. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. Property is on town sewer. Refer to the wastewater division for comments. Assessors, no comment. There is a notation email from February twenty fifth today. Uh, to Ashley. It says, we heard the project last night was approved under an RDA with conservation. Can you send approved plan of reference when back from the field? Uh, and as far as I know, we haven't gotten that yet. We do have it.
All right. And I think Attorney Kevin Clower represents the applicant. So if he could be elevated, please.
Okay. All right. So we did receive the plan. From conservation, but we haven't received anything on the decision, of course, because it was just done last night.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. And the voting members on this project will be the regular voting members. Attorney Clower.
Good evening, Mr. Ari. Mr. Ari, members of the board, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. And I am an attorney here in Falmouth and I represent the applicant, Joseph P. Celia trustee. Who is the applicant and owner of this property at ten Grove Street in North Falmouth. He's seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling, which also involves the modification of an existing special permit. This lot is seventy five hundred square feet and is located in the New Silver Beach area of town, really dense, lovely residential neighborhood. It's located in the residential C zoning district. Presently, there's a three bedroom, single family dwelling. Lot coverage by structure there is seventeen point one percent. And it's non-conforming in a few ways. It's non-conforming to front yard setback being twenty three point two feet where twenty five is required. To the side yard to the east being nine point eight where ten is required. And the rear yard setback to the south being seven and a half feet where ten is required. They're proposing some renovations and alterations which will improve the usefulness and the aesthetics of the property and the building. There'll be a small addition on the southern side and an expansion of the existing second floor. Uh, which will result in a more open layout, eliminate some of the choppiness of the, uh, of the dwelling. This due to both the special permit and the existing non-conformities, this does require a special permit under section two forty three C. That section states that pre-existing non-conforming structures can be changed by special permit. Provided that they are not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of two forty, two sixteen. And whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities, compares views and vistas. And reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. Here, there is no new non-conformity created. The existing non-conforming setbacks, the front yard and the side yard are unaffected. And the rear yard setbacks actually improved from five and a half feet to seven and a half feet. I'm sorry. Yes. And much of the deck is removed, resulting in a decrease in lot coverage by structure. From seventeen point one down to fifteen point nine, well below the twenty percent that's allowed. There's really no impact of using vistas and it's certainly in line with the other houses in the neighborhood. This project, as proposed, represents a significant improvement for the owners. It meets the standards of two forty three C and two forty two sixteen. And doesn't have any adverse effects that I'm aware of. This project is on the. New Silver Beach Sewer District, and but there's no addition of any bedrooms. I believe that this board can and should grant a special permit and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Very good. Thank you, Attorney Clower. Board questions, Ed?
None at this time.
Thank you, Ed. James?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
So, Mr. Clower, are you aware that the original special permit limited it to two bedrooms?
I saw that it said it was two bedrooms and I, that was saying it's three bedrooms is my count. Uh, I'm not aware that it limits it to two bedrooms. It just says that it was staying at two bedrooms at that time. But the New Silver Sewer District does allow you to go to three bedrooms by right.
So my only question is, so in the conditions of the special permit, it says there will be no increase in the number of bedrooms. Through this special permit and the bedroom count shall remain as two?
Sure, but I think that can be modified as part of, uh, that can be changed as part of the modification of the special permit.
All right. So you'd be asking for the modification then? And when this permit was done, is this, is that because it wasn't on town sewer at that time?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure. As far as I'm aware, back in, uh, when that, when that special permit was approved, it was, uh, it was on town sewer. But I noticed that in the findings, it said that there's no increase in bedrooms. But I did review the, um. The bylaws relative to sewer and in the New Silver Sewer District, you are allowed to go to three bedrooms.
And on this current plan, are there any other rooms that would also? Could be defined as another bedroom or no?
No.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Mary?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. Ken?
Uh, no questions. I think New Silver Beach Sewer Project wasn't completed till oh nine.
That might be it.
This was oh six, that permit.
That predates my time. Uh, so I'm not as familiar with that, the, that timeline here.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Scott?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. And I don't have any questions myself. Turn it to public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon using the Zoom. Virtual software and we will get to you shortly. All right. Last call for public comment. If anyone is out there, go ahead and click the raised hand icon. Okay. Seeing no public comment back to the board. Any follow up questions from the board?
Um, I, I'm looking for lot coverage.
The law is actually decreasing from seventeen point one to fifteen point nine.
Now it's because of the removal of the deck, basically.
Correct. Yep.
Very good. Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay. No further questions? Is there a motion?
So I guess I, I would just have one quick comment again. Uh, it just cleared conservation last night. And we don't have anything regarding their decision. Like we have in some of the other proposals. And I just think it's, it's tough to move on with a final without having a copy of the actual. Decision where engineering is asking us to look at conservation's decision.
Understood. How's everyone feel about that?
We go on contingency basis that if it's continued on approval contingent upon a positive finding by Concom?
I think we could work that in.
We actually want, we actually want a negative finding from Concom.
Negative.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, I think that we, there could be a finding or even a condition that we have to comply with any requirements from the Conservation Commission decision.
Yeah. I think at least from a zoning standpoint, there's definitely improvements with the decrease in lot coverage. All right. So if everyone's okay with that, is there a motion?
Make a motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Scott and I'll give the second to Ken. Roll call vote, Ed?
Thank you, Ryan.
Bob?
Robert Duganite.
Ken?
Ken Formanite.
Scott?
Scott Zlinski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. The hearing is closed. Uh, would we like to proceed?
So I, I, I think we're probably looking at a motion to approve with conditions. I, there's a lot of things that have to be put in here that I'm just not prepared to put in here because. You're gonna have to reference coastal banks and everything else. So if somebody wants to else make that motion and put in what's needed, I. I just don't feel comfortable putting everything in tonight without. Reviewing the conservation info.
Would anyone else like to make a motion then? Thank you, Bob. Look, Ken, I think you're, uh, looks like you're trying to talk, but you're muted.
I wasn't trying to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But, uh, you, you know, I, I, I would just move that we approve this. With the, uh, finding that, uh, you know, we're, we're waiting for conservation. You know, their requirements and then as a condition. That, you know, the project abide by any conditions imposed by the Conservation Commission.
All right. So would you like to make a motion to approve and then we'll?
Yes.
Get going.
And I just add that part on top of what I already said.
Very good. So is there a second on Ken's motion to approve? All right. Moving on to findings.
Another otherwise ask for plans. So there's a reduction in lot coverage. Increase in utilization.
May go to three bedroom?
Right. Yeah. I think that's a good point. In the findings, the prior, uh, decision limited to two bedrooms. Now we have, now that it's, it's on the sewer, it was not on the sewer at the time of the prior decision and. They're entitled to, uh. Is it four bedrooms under the bylaw there or is it?
Three.
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 Three?
Okay, three.
I think they said a side yard setback is being eliminated.
Yeah, when Norrie drafted, she's gonna have to put the dimensions to the coastal bank. Put in the flood zone. Put in the FEMA worksheet.
All right. Anything else?
The FEMA. Highest lots on that road too.
A finding could be they conform to the FEMA, you know, they submitted full FEMA calculations and they conform.
All right. Okay. Anything else for findings?
I guess, but in a finding that.
Reduction in lock coverage, right?
Yes, correct.
Put in a finding that the engineer referral suggested that we use the, uh, Concom's. Conditions for, um, stormwater and any other conditions that they find that we need.
All right. Anything else for findings?
Just put as a finding that it's an RC zone land. It is within the Wild Harbor Coast to pond overlay district. Put it in a finding, there's testimony that no other rooms will be set up to be conditioned to be, uh, meet the definition of a bedroom above three. Uh, also put in a finding that the previous decision did have a two bedroom limitation. And this modification is.
I think I mentioned that.
We did that.
The water. Put in a condition that the house number. Be posted, uh, per the engineering referral and I think it was facing Grove Street. Prior occupancy permit. And then I guess let me put in a condition working in the comments from the water department. That the, um. Service need to be checked to see if it needs to be renewed from the curb stop to the home. Uh, because of a shared service feed and, uh, plumbing improvements on the second floor.
All right. Anything else for conditions? No more than how many beds is it? Sorry, three or four?
Three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms.
No more than three as a condition. All right. Anything else for conditions?
Just put in a finding.
Finding is they're entitled to free under the, under the bylaw because they're.
Right.
Just, just, just had a finding in there that the original permit was limited to two bedrooms and the house, uh, does contain more than two bedrooms.
Okay. Anything else? What additional language for Concom abide by the Concom or?
Yeah, that's under the conditions, right?
Okay, that was already added. Okay. All right. Anything else?
I think we've got it.
Very good. All right. So that.
Oh, can you, TJ, just add the condition to about the, um, the assessors department?
Oh, yeah.
Having access prior to.
Access prior to. All right. Anything else?
Do you need construction hours or is that area already?
Lots of.
It's on the lot. I mean, as far as traffic wise, but the hours, the hours, right?
To do the hour restriction.
Seven to seven, eight to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is it? Eight to four on Saturday?
Eight to four on Saturday. Yeah.
Yeah.
No Sundays.
Okay. So if that does it for findings and conditions, that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Ken. And seconded by Ed. Roll call.
Little help from my friends.
Of course. Ed?
Thank you, Ryan.
Bob?
Robert Duganite.
Ken?
Ken Formanite.
Scott?
Scott Zlinski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So the, uh, project passes unanimously with conditions. Attorney Clower, thank you.
This, you guys were seeing all this, this, uh.
Captioning on the bottom?
Yeah.
I was slightly distracted because it said rubber chicken.
Turn mine off.
It just referred to Scott. Scott Godzilla, so.
Uh, all right.
It's a fair characterization.
Tread lightly. There's a joke there, but I'm not.
That's. Oh, boy. Okay. Moving right along. We have application three.
Well, Kevin, you were referred to as Kevin Clown.
Hey, if the shoe fits.
All right. Application three dash twenty one Rizzoli, uh, twenty eight Barnack Road in Woods Hole. Bob?
So application number zero zero three dash twenty one, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty eight of the Mass General laws. You are hereby notified that Martha B. Rizzoli of Jamaica Plain, Mass. Has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for modification of special permit ninety eight dash zero eight. Pursuant to sections two forty dash three C of the Code of Falmouth. To construct an addition above a garage, roof deck and a partial second floor addition. Subject property is twenty eight Barnack Road, Woods Hole, Mass. For referrals. From engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Barnack Road is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abudders or public rights of way. Adequate erosion and sediment controls to protect the town right of way are shown on the plan. Where the project falls in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, we refer to the Conservation Commission for stormwater management and erosion controls. Five note, there appears to be a fence and landscape bed, cobble driveway border and potentially a portion of a stone wall located in the town right of way that may require a license. If a driveway permit were required for this project, we would not allow the driveway cobbles within the five feet of the road surface unless they are flush and at least one foot off the road surface. Remaining items are outside of our jurisdiction. From Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission voted to approve the proposed project through a negative determination via request for determination of applicability on December sixteenth, twenty twenty. Permit is attached. Erosion control should be installed as on proposed plan. Water department, the water service needs to be shown on the plan from the home to the main. It is fed from an eight inch main currently. There is an existing meter pit on site. The meter pit should be removed and a new meter be installed inside of the home as part of the proposed improvements. Planning, no comment. Uh, from Amy Lowell, wastewater. This property is connected to the sewer. It looks to me like it's increasing to a total of four bedrooms, which is allowed by right under the flow neutral bylaws. So no variance to that bylaw would be required. Also, uh, looks like they are not planning any changes to the house footprints and no change to the sewer connection will be needed. Uh, and no sewer connection modification permit would be required as currently proposed. Assessors, no comment. Fire department has no issues as drawn. Uh, there is one letter in here with comments. I'll read it briefly. Uh, dear board members, this is from, um, William Roslansky, property owner, twenty-six Barnack Road, comma, twenty-six Albatross. Dear board members, I am writing in partial support of this project. I'm an owner or part owner of two adjacent adjoining properties. The Rizzolis have been very kind in accommodating his neighbors. Through no fault of any of the current owners, the buildings on these lots are ridiculously close together. First off, I'm sorry to lose more of my view from our adjoining property at twenty-six Barnack. And at the same time, I am grateful to my neighbors for maintaining some of that view at the second floor level. Several areas of concern in no particular order of priority. Uh, the outdoor lighting has been adjusted to have less of a visual impact on me, but the lighting has a charring stark bluish white cast to it. This is unappealing at night and also has a detrimental impact on the nearby harbor area. Bodas are impacted by this and by unshielded lights like the one on top of the flagpole. The village of Woods Hole has battled to maintain gentle shielded lighting. I'm hoping that lights that are added will not shine into other people's windows at night. The left side elevation does not show the proposed bay window, which will block our remaining view by an additional two feet. If this could be eliminated or reduced, it would be beneficial to our adjacent property. This would make room for an even larger picture window, which would be a positive thing. The bay window looks a bit jammed in from a design point of view, in my humble opinion. The future outdoor roof deck, I think, would be really used and not offer much improvement to the existing views of the harbor. Hopefully it would have carefully shielded lighting if this is constructed. The new bushes added alongside the privet hedge adjoining twenty-six Albatross Street will end up blocking what is a lovely sunset view and colors that come through my back door. I hope it is impossible to move these bushes or shift them into the existing privet hedge, which I keep trimmed low in that area to maintain, uh, my evening color. The existing second floor area over the back of the house has a footprint different than is shown on the plans. The existing floor plan should be an accurate representation of whatever currently exists to the project for the owner's interests. I would be deeply concerned if there were any foundation work because our building at twenty-six Barnack is directly on the property line. And the foundations do not extend far below grade. Digging in that area will jeopardize the foundations. I apologize for how close our building is to the lot line, though it was done long before my time. There is an umbrella pine tree, which does a good job of disguising how awkwardly tall the house at twenty-six Barnack is. Would be a shame to see that tree go, but hard to picture how the garage will work can be done without biting into the tree. I'm also hoping that any additional fencing along the property line can be avoided. The fencing that is currently there does a pretty good job of maintaining the privacy for both sides without blocking light and view for many of the side windows. Uh, and lastly, I don't see why the Rizzoli should be held back from adding some second floor space to their house, even though our loss of view is regrettable will reduce the value of our property. I'm again grateful to them for their kindness over the years. William Roslansky, property owner, twenty-six Barnack Road. And that's all that's in the file.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And the voting members on this project will be the regular voting members and attorney Clower for the applicants. Oh, you're muted.
Didn't make it too far, thankfully. Uh, good evening again, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, again, my name is Kevin Clower and I represent the applicant Martha B. Rizzoli. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Rizzoli are actually here, uh, in, in the audience, so to speak, this evening. And I'm also joined by the architect Greg Sarunian. Uh, I don't think we need to elevate anyone just yet, but if any questions do come up, uh, we may do so. I may, I may request that we do so. Uh, Mrs. Rizzoli is here tonight to seek a modification of an existing special permit and also to alter the existing nonconforming dwelling. There'll be an expansion, uh, of the second floor within the existing footprint. This property, twenty-eight Barnack Road, is on a lot of seven thousand two hundred and twelve square feet, uh, located in the heart of Woods Hole Village. It's, it's a very dense residential neighborhood nearby to Falmouth Harbor, uh, Woods Hole Harbor, rather. Um, this is a property that's actually zoned public use in all of my applications. I think this is the first one I've ever dealt with that is zoned public use. Um, so that's a little bit of a wrinkle. Um, and it is, uh, surprisingly not in the flood zone. Uh, it kind of is a bit of an island right there. Presently, there's a three bedroom, single family dwelling on the site. The lot coverage on the structure, uh, by lockovers by structure, rather, is twenty-nine point eight feet, uh, twenty-eight percent. It's been a long night. I'm sorry. Eight percent. Uh, public use actually allows for lot coverage by structure of forty percent. So it's, it's well below the amount of lot coverage that is allowed by right. The structure, however, is nonconforming. Uh, it's nonconforming to the front yard setback being four point eight feet where twenty-five is required. And also to the side yard setback being three point seven feet where ten is required. Uh, the applicants have been making a lot more use of this property, uh, over the past year or so, and I want to make some improvements to it, uh, to increase the usefulness of it. They are proposing an expansion of the second floor within that existing footprint. Uh, there's no change to the footprint at all. There is, uh, there is an increase in bedrooms to four, but as was noted by Ms. Lowell, uh, because this is on the Woods Hole sewer, which differs from the, the New Silver Sewer. It allows her four bedrooms by right. Uh, under two forty-three C, which is the applicable section of the bylaw, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided this board finds that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider two forty-two sixteen and whether or not that alteration creates a new dimensional nonconformity, impairs views and vistas and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. In this instance, there's no new nonconformity created. Uh, the existing nonconforming setbacks will be unchanged. And it otherwise conforms to applicable, uh, setbacks and lock coverage requirements. There's no impact to views and vistas, uh, as, uh, the areas of addition will not exceed the existing ridge height. And it's in line with the other houses in the neighborhood. Uh, as Mr. Roslansky pointed out in his letter, the abutting property is, uh, is significantly taller than, than our existing property here. This proposal for the applicants represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions and is much more useful. Um, there, it will not be substantially more detrimental than what exists. And there's no adverse effects that overbalance beneficial effects. Uh, I believe this board can and should grant a special permit for this project, and I'm happy to address any questions that you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Attorney Clower. Turn it to board questions. Uh, Ed, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. James? Nothing. Bob?
Uh, no questions, but when, um, Mr. Clower's time, can he just, uh, go over the issues brought up in the Roslansky letter?
Sure. I mean, uh, I'm not quite sure what, what issues to address. I, I, I disagree with his statement that the, uh, existing floor plan doesn't match what's shown in the plans. That was done by the engineers and the architect. I believe that to be accurate representation. Uh, we, we discussed that briefly and as far as I'm aware, uh, it is an accurate representation. Otherwise, you know, I don't think he, he raised many concerns that aren't already addressed, uh, by the plans.
Any issues with the lighting or possibility of using shielded lighting?
I can speak with my clients about it. I'm sure that they're willing to, uh, to, to work, to accommodate their neighbors in the neighborhood.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Mary?
I have no question.
Thank you, Mary. Ken?
No questions from me.
Scott?
Just a matter of the, with the tree issue that Mr. Roslansky, uh, brought up. Do you, do you see any issue with, uh, the construction interfering, cutting into that tree?
I, I suspect it probably will. Um, I, I, I'll defer to, to Greg Sarunian if we can elevate Greg.
Sure. If we can get Mr. Sarunian elevated. I think, is he Greg? I think he is. There he is.
But I mean, looking at the plans, looking at the, looking at the site, I, I believe that that would, that would have to be, uh, removed. But, uh, again, I will defer to, uh, Mr. Sarunian.
Did you just have to unmute yourself? Yep. I came in a little unstable there.
Mr. Sarunian, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yep. So I believe that it is our intention to try to keep the tree. I actually went out there today and looked at it. We may need to limb up, up a few limbs. But, um, you know, we're basically going straight up on the plane that's there now. And there's only a few branches that overhang that. We're not going up too much higher. It's really just a little loft we're building there. So it appears we can flop off, you know, a few of the limbs.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is why I defer to people like Greg.
Of course. In terms of the proposed construction, is there anything actually being done to the, um, to the foundation itself? Attorney Clower? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right. Uh, we'll turn it to public comment. If there's any question, comment or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon uh, in the Zoom app and we will get to you in a minute. Okay. Not seeing anyone. Back to the board. Any follow-up questions?
I just wanted to Clower, in the previous special permit, was there anything that wasn't complied with?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's all I have.
Very good. Any other follow-up questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none is their motion.
Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, thank you. Motion by, closed by Bob and seconded by Scott. Roll call vote. Ed?
Ed, thank you.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ken? Nope, you're muted, Ken.
And Forman, I.
Thank you, Ken. Scott?
Grotzelski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So the hearing is closed. How would the board like to proceed?
A motion to approve with conditions.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Dugan's motion.
Very good. Motion was made by Bob to approve with conditions and Ed, I'll give that to Ed. Go ahead, Bob.
Uh, two forty dash three C, two forty dash two sixteen, not substantially more detrimental. Uh, pro- property is zoned public use. Uh, and also not in a flood zone. Currently contains a three bedroom dwelling at twenty-nine point eight percent. Uh, public use allows forty percent uh, lot coverage. There is a nonconformity to front yard setback of four point eight where twenty-five is required and three point seven feet where ten is required for the side setback. Uh, property is on the Woods Hole sewer system, which allows four bedrooms by right without triggering the flow neutral bylaw. Uh, there's no change to any of the nonconformities. A testimony that was, uh, that the property has complied with the previous special permit, that this is asked to modify. Uh, testimony was the applicant will try to conserve the umbrella pine tree if at all possible. An applicant would be amenable to shielded lighting. Uh, property did go before the Conservation, uh, Commission, which approved the project through a negative determination via request for determination of applicability in December of twenty twenty. Uh, it did mention that erosion controls should be installed as the proposed plan that they permitted. And where they permitted it, they would be the entity for the erosion and sediment controls.
All right. Anything else for findings?
No, I think it's.
Okay. Conditions?
Uh, per plans. Uh, four bedroom limitation due to Woods Hole sewer system. Uh, applicant will, um, try to conserve the umbrella pine tree. Uh, exterior lighting should be shielded lighting.
Work hours?
Yeah, it should have the work hours and also add the, um, the assessors department, uh, review prior to the occupancy. And then the, um, anything from the Concom. Any of their conditions, it would be subject to their conditions. Uh, also regarding the water department. Oh, yeah, we do need to put in. Put in a finding that engineering noted that the fence, landscape bed, cobble driveway border in a portion of the stone wall, uh, may be located in the town right of way, which may require a license. Also put in the finding that if a driveway permit was required for the project, engineering would not allow driveway cobbles within five feet of the road surface.
We have to put in a, a finding that the abudders property is, uh, that shares, it shares a property line?
Yeah, why don't you put one in that the abudders property is actually located on the property line?
That's a good one, Scott. Thank you.
So I think in the past, we've had a referral from engineering. Uh, we.
You've been using that license?
Right. We normally refer to the applicant to the select board.
Selectance.
Um, approval.
So I'd use that same clause we've used on the previous ones for licenses. And then on the.
There's absolutely no way to restrict them from, uh, uh, construction equipment or supplies on that property. There's just no room for that.
No, there's just no space.
And so Bob, earlier in the night, I think you had a finding or a condition that they would try to keep everything off the street as much as possible or don't.
Yeah, we can put the same thing just to try, but knowing that there's stuff. And then, uh, for the water department. Uh, the meter pit should be removed and a new meter installed inside of the home as part of the proposed project. And that would be through the water department. And the plans need to show, uh, the service from the home to the main. from the home to the main.
Okay, anything else?
No, you may just want to put a finding just because regarding the lights, there was a comment that shielded lighting was, um, requested because it had issues with boat navigation on the harbor.
Um, an assessor review.
Yeah, assessors review.
Yes, please. All right, anything else? Okay, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ed?
Ed, thank you and I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ken?
And Foreman, I.
Scott?
Scott Roselansky, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So motion passes unanimously. Attorney Clower, thank you.
Ken, you are the night.
It's, uh, it's been a long day and a, and a long week and a lo- and a, a, a long month and a year of long months. So yeah, I think we all will. So thank you all for your time. I, it is greatly appreciated. Um, have a great night and a great weekend.
You too. Okay. Up next, we have application seventy-eight dash twenty, Street fifty Quimby Lane in East Falmouth.
So application number seventy-eight dash twenty, being all persons deemed effect by the Board of Appeals under Section eleven of Chapter forty-eight of the Master General Laws. Hereby notified that Gary Street of Euphorid Mass filed an appeal with the Falmouth Town Clerk pursuant to Master General Laws forty-eighth, subsection eight and fifteen and two forty dash two oh two of the Code of Falmouth, appealing the building commissioner's determination. The subject property is fifty Quimby Lane, East Falmouth, Mass.
I believe you have a letter requesting withdrawal in the file.
Yeah, and then there's a, there was a letter submitted today, which is Thursday, February twenty-fifth, um, from the applicant Gary Street. And it says regarding fifty Quimby Lane, members of the board, in light of the Commissioner Palmer's decision reversal, I would like to withdraw my appeal without prejudice. Um, thank you in advance, Gary Street. Um, as a housekeeping issue, I just, I have an issue with closing this out tonight. So in the file with the original application, when he was doing the appeal, he sent a copy of the building commissioner's decision. I'll pull it up for a second. So on December eighth of twenty twenty, the Falmouth Building Commissioner Rod Palmer uh, submitted a letter to Mr. Street, forty-nine Quimby Lane, Falmouth, Mass regarding parcel twenty-nine oh two fifteen D fifty-eight. And it reads, Dear Mr. Street, per our con- per our conversation regarding lot fifty-eight Quimby Lane, it is my opinion that this property slash parcel is not subject to the exception within chapter two forty dash thirteen of the Falmouth zoning bylaws. See lot frontage, frontage requirements are up to three lots on the arc of the curve at the end of the cul-de-sac may be reduced no less than sixty percent of the required minimum for the district. It is my opinion that your street, Quimby Lane, does not comply with the definition of a cul-de-sac per two forty dash thirteen. Therefore, your proposed dwelling would need to maintain a twenty-five foot setback adjacent to Quimby Lane along the road layout. Since then, uh, Mr. Palmer has submitted another letter. And this letter is dated February twenty-third of twenty twenty-one regarding the same parcel. This letter reads, after further review and per section two forty dash one twenty-seven, minimum lot dimension and yard requirements of the Falmouth zoning bylaws. It is my opinion that your proposed single-family dwelling is shown on plot plan for fifty Quimby Lane, prepared for Gary Street. By Falmouth Engineering on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, project number zero five ZF zero two eight does in fact comply with the minimum lot dimensions and yard requirements. Um, I guess my, my point here is mainly a point of order. We have a on-file denial that refers to a section two forty dash thirteen. And then we have a reversal that only refers to two four forty dash one twenty-seven, which is a completely different section of the bylaw. There's no notation why it no longer needs to comply with twenty-four dash thirteen or no description of how it complies with two forty dash one twenty-seven. Uh, because I don't have that in the file right now, if something came to review at a future date and somebody was looking through these plans and they were asking why the decision was reversed and what it's based on. Um, we don't have anything that says why two forty dash thirteen no longer comply. So it seems to be a contradiction. It may just have been that the building commissioner just didn't include it in the second letter. But as the file reads, we have one letter that says it doesn't comply to one portion of the bylaw and has to maintain the twenty-five feet. And one that says it complies to a separate section. I did look up section two forty dash one twenty-seven. And for some reason, two forty dash one twenty-seven also seems to refer that the setback needs to be twenty-five feet. So I understand that Mr. Street would like to withdraw because he now has this new letter, but I think this puts the board in a little situation without more clarification from the building department. That we would be accepting a withdrawal based on the fact that we have two letters that kind of contradict themselves. Um, under our procedures and regulations, if he had done this prior to publication of the application, he could have just withdrawn. Uh, now that the publication has been, has been advertised and posted, we still can accept the withdrawal on a vote from the individual board members. But, um, I guess I would make the argument that if we did allow that withdrawal right now, we have nothing specific to base it on because we have two separate pieces of information. Um, what I would rather do is take it under advisement, giving the administrator time to contact the building commissioner, have him modify or notate his new letter on why the previous letter no longer complies and why the new letter does. And that way, that can be put in the file before the hearing is closed. And then if somebody looks at it in the future, if we do this tonight, we can't add anything to the file and we basically have two contradictory, um, letters of information.
Okay, so I have a suggestion for you here. First, first order of business is that if you accept the withdrawal, that, that closes the case. And you know, what's in the file or not is not of substance because you're voting withdrawal. So even if you have a further description from the building commissioner, that's not going to change the fact that the vote is a withdrawal. Would also point out to you that the applicant for the case is not here tonight. It was the understanding that, um, having submitted the withdrawal, the applicant who voluntarily applied to the board is now rescinding that request for an application from you. Um, I do understand that you would like better clarification from the building commissioner. Uh, you do have a meeting coming up with the building commissioner in a week's time. You know, that may be an item you want to address. Uh, you know, I understand that you'd like further clarification, but I don't think that that's going to add to this file. And I, I think that continuing the hearing is going to have any effect on the withdrawal.
So according to our procedures, because this has already been published, the board does have the right to take the vote and either accept the withdrawal, accept the withdrawal with or without prejudice or take it under advisement. And I do understand that the applicant isn't here tonight and the applicant shouldn't have the ability to be here. Even though it may or may not have been mentioned that this would be an automatic withdrawal. It's up to the decision of the board the night the application comes in, how the board wants to vote. I think as a, as a board member, if I've been made aware through the file that, and, and I've never been involved and I don't know how, how many times this has happened, but this is the first reversal I've seen that I've been on that the building commissioner has actually changed an opinion. And the other ones that I've been on, he usually confirms his opinion and gives the reasons why. If board members are aware that we have a letter in the file that says it does not comply to a section of the bylaw because it doesn't have this setback that is required. And then the board members are aware that a new letter has been written under a separate bylaw saying that it complies under that bylaw. And when the board members refer to their bylaw book under that section, it isn't clear that it conforms. It actually almost seems that it also needs the twenty-five foot setback. I would just like the opportunity to have the building commissioner clarify for the file. Because if not, I would not vote to withdraw the application without the afforded information that's before us. We would be relying on derogatory statements between the two letters that means the property still is non-conforming. I do find it interesting that the first letter is extremely descriptive on twenty-two forty, uh, on the two forty thirteen. But the second letter just states the, it just states the bylaw two forty-one twenty-seven and has no other reference to anything else. So we've got two things that are submitted. If the applicant had withdrawn this prior to the publication, I would have, you know, no different choice to do than just say withdraw. But once it's been publicized and it's now a public file, I think we have to have the corrected information. If not, what's been happening with some of the files with misinformation isn't going to be corrected. If we accept the withdrawal tonight, this file closes. You can't add anything back into the file.
But that sounds a little preemptive, Bob. That's not what's before us tonight. They're, they're looking to withdraw.
But they've submitted to us information that says it doesn't qualify.
But then he, then he asked to withdraw. I mean, I would, as, as much as we, as much as we ask the building commissioner to make a stand on things, he has. I, I, I think that it's his prerogative to have changed his mind and that we should, we should respect that. And but if it comes back before us, then that can be readdressed. But I think at this point, I think it would, I don't think that's in our purview to to add it to the file for something that may happen down the line. He's already made the call and, and, and the applicant's withdrawn.
Well, the applicant's withdrawn because he's now quoting a different bylaw, but it still shows by the first letter that it isn't in compliance.
Yeah, he was appealing the building commissioner's determination, who has now reversed his position on it.
But he didn't reverse it to the original bylaw change. He's referring to something else that could be in addition. It, they're, they're two separate indistinct bylaws. He's turning somebody down for one, but then accepting it for the other. If he just put in there that the other one no longer applied because this one supersedes and it allows you to do less than the twenty-five foot setback. But that's not being stated either. So I just, you know, when I look at the files, I, I look at some of these like I'm just a member of the public that's running through the files. If I'm a member of the public and looking at this and saying that I have a turn down on a law, very specific on one bylaw, and then so many weeks later, I have a new decision that's based on a new bylaw, but doesn't reference the first one that I was turned down originally, I just think it, it's, it's very confusing for the files. And I, if I was, you know, if I was the applicant, I would withdraw too because I have a new letter.
Right. But you know, here's the thing is, as well, is that you periodically do get updates or corrections from Board of Health where they made one opinion and something was brought to their attention and they make a second opinion. And so typically what they say to you or what the indication is, is that I have now changed my mind based on new information. That being said, clearly the building commissioner did not articulate that to your liking. That being said, even if you choose not to accept the withdrawal, the building commissioner is basically stating to you that he's going to issue a permit as of right. So the applicant has approached you again to withdraw based on this new opinion. So, I mean, while I understand you're looking for more clarification, I don't think it will change the course of your vote here.
So Noreen, how does this show that it complies?
I understand that.
No, no, I'm asking your opinion. How does it show that it complies under two forty-one twenty-seven?
All right, so it's my understanding that this, um, location of the proposal is a, um, specific planned unit development that has specific setbacks and rules, et cetera. And it may be that the building commissioner did further research and found out that indeed this is fine. Again, you know, it's, you, there's not a lot of clarification here. But.
You know, I, I took a look at this.
Sorry, go, go ahead, Mary.
I'm sorry.
I took a look at this because, um, I don't really have any idea why I did. But I will tell you that the references in the, in the first one are coming from the definition section in the bylaws. And then I looked at the two forty seventeen, which is very general about minimum lot dimensions. And then it, it tells you to look at the district use regulations. It's, it, I wasn't clear in looking at it as to why he reversed his decision. And frankly, I, I think that if you were, I don't have a problem with anybody reversing a decision. It's a question of, you should be able to explain why. And I think in almost every other case where we have, where there's been a reversal, there's been adequate description of why somebody reversed it. And in here, it just didn't seem like it was there at all. I don't think it's asking much.
Right.
To say, let's, let's just get what we need, which is additional information and, and then we'll deal with it.
Right, but I, what I'm suggesting to you is that the applicant should not be harmed or held responsible for lack of clarity from staff.
Well, that's fine, but it, what, what is the harm in, in putting it off because we don't have enough information before us? That's all. It's not any harm to the applicant and I don't know who told the applicant not to come.
And, and the problem is too, is we're, we're getting dangerously close to getting into the substantive issues of this actual application and the applicant's not here and.
Absolutely.
And, and, and I agree to Bob's point, um, you know, by practice in the past, the board's been extremely lenient with allowing applicants to withdraw, um, you know, without prejudice at their request, but we do have our rules, uh, which, which Bob alluded to, and you need, you need at least four members to allow a withdrawal. And it's at our discretion. It's not at the discretion, discretion of the applicant. Of course, they can ask, but it's up to us to allow that withdrawal. And what, what was the date of publication, Bob? Sorry, you're, you're muted.
So, so our procedure is just referenced that once it has been publicized, which it was, it's on an agenda, it's for a meeting, that once that happens, that just like you said, the, the, the board will do a vote and decide how they want to handle it. I just wanted to point out the fact that that they're, they're basing this on a new letter that doesn't reference the issues in the original letter. It references two different bylaws and it doesn't describe why it suddenly complies when it didn't a month ago. It, it, it just, it, it seems like everything's been left very ambiguous, open-ended. So I just wanted to bring it out. I, I'm sure they haven't a vote for the withdrawal. I personally wouldn't vote for withdrawal tonight only because I just want to have something put in the file that explains what the correction was and that it complies, but.
Right, but, but you need that from the building commissioner. So even if the applicant were here, the applicant cannot provide for you the words of the building commissioner.
I agree. So that's why I would suggest that we take it under advisement and ask the building commissioner to. I agree. So that's why I would suggest that we take it under advisement and ask the building commissioner to. Enlight us to what the change was based on the first decision. Look, it's just, it's just my opinion with the file. I've never seen anything that. When I looked at two forty dash one twenty seven, I thought it would just say there that you don't have to have a 25 foot setback. And then it wouldn't be a problem. But when I look it up, it says you have to have a 25 foot setback. Now, it could be based what you said. You may be aware that this was part of a planned development, but we don't even have anything in the file. Or none of the letters refer to a planned development or a district change or what the district is. It's just a quick change and I would just feel more comfortable knowing that it was based on something specific. So that if someone else comes back at some point at the same situation and suddenly we find that, wait a second, it doesn't comply. The first thing they're going to say is, but you did this one. I mean, in the file, they even submitted a copy of another property that isn't even this property. To show that that property at some point got a permit and I don't even know how that even related to the rest of the file. Originally, I thought that was the, the parcel. So like I said, you, you probably have enough votes. It's just that I, I'm not going to vote. I'm not going to vote in favor of withdrawal without the corrected information or the different information. I, I personally, I feel uncomfortable with it. I think it. It negates itself in the file and any member of the public that goes in there wouldn't be able to make any sense of it.
Bob, can you please give me two dates and, and this might affect my decision making process. Date, date of applic- I'm sorry, date of publication for this hearing. And the second I need is the date of the building commissioner's second letter. Which basically rescinded his first decision. Sorry to put you on the spot. But you're, you're muted right now.
Second letter is February twenty third.
Yeah, so that, so the rescinding letter was February twenty third. The publication dates were January twenty ninth and February fifth.
Alright. So if you choose not to vote this case tonight. The proper protocol would be to continue it to a date certain. And then you can discuss it or vote at that point in time. Um, again, I'm not advocating either way, but just stating for the fact that. You know, I think the explanation from the building commissioner makes perfect sense for understanding purposes. However, I would advocate that it will not affect your vote. And the, the applicant either way. Even if the building commissioner, whatever the building commissioner wrote, the applicant still does have the right to request the withdrawal.
Right, he has the applicant, the, the right to request. It's up to us to ultimately allow that withdrawal.
So I'm trying to. I'm just trying to figure out what the scenario is at. If, if we. If he had not. If we did not overturn. The building commissioner decision, uh, he would not be entitled. To go forward with the project, right? Uh, based on the first letter. But then we still have the second letter hanging out there. It says he is entitled. And that's in limbo, right? I mean. Are we challenging that? Are we, no one's asked us to overturn that decision. There's no appeal of, of that. So I'm just, you know, I'm trying to figure out.
I think we need to know why the first letter.
Not saying it couldn't be better documented, Bob, but.
No, no, I, I think, I think we need to find out why the first letter of denial. Based on twenty two forty dash thirteen. No longer comply, no longer is an issue.
Well, I think he decided that this.
He decided, he decided.
Did conform to the definition of a cul-de-sac. That's the only conclusion. I mean, he says it didn't in the first letter. And then he must have changed his mind.
But two forty dash. Say that. It doesn't say that if you go to his references in the second.
No, it, it doesn't, but it, it implies it, uh, uh, and, and.
It only implies that he changed his mind. It doesn't give rationale for it.
Well, the rationale is two, two forty one twenty seven where he says you meet these requirements.
So two forty.
That refers to districts and he doesn't even go to the specific district to quote the specific district.
But, but I think, um, the point that I'm, we're, we're being asked. Just to. Judge the. The, the first letter. Right? The appeal formally refers only to that first letter.
Correct.
Now we have the second letter. What do we do with it?
I think potentially you've got a problem here, Mr. Chairman.
I agree.
We, we have a huge problem here.
I think, I think we, go ahead.
I, I, I think absent, I mean, we're, we're asking, the applicant's asking to withdraw the application. Who was seeking relief from the initial decision of the building inspector, which. According to the record has been withdrawn. I think that we could be making these decisions if a neighbor was aggrieved and then asking. For the building inspector to make it to enforce the zoning rules and he wasn't. I, 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 absent a complaint, I don't think we should, I, I think that you should just take up a straight up vote as to whether or not. You want to let somebody withdraw. I think if you start substituting judgment or. What's up, Scott?
I think it's as simple as that, the way he, that James just described it.
Yeah.
With getting off.
And, and I, I, I completely agree with Bob's frustration about keeping the files, but it, it's kind of a non-issue at this point. Given that the letter is, it, it, there's been a, a, a change in the. Building inspector's interpretation of what a cul-de-sac is. If a neighbor complains and wants enforcement under the ZBA at that point. I think now the issue about asking the building inspector to justify his decision is properly before us. Until then. I don't think we have standing to make that decision and we shouldn't.
I guess my confusion comes from the first bylaw relates to cul-de-sacs and setbacks the front yards. The second bylaw. Only relates to front yard setback. Both of them reference, you have to have a minimum of 25 feet. The original letter said he had to comply with 25 feet. The second letter says you don't, but the section that's referenced says you do.
Wasn't there some testimony that was given in his letter that he found some new information?
All as he said is upon review. Further review. But, but the problem is what he's quoting the further reviewer complies with. If you look up right now, two forty dash one twenty seven, it says you must have a minimum 25 foot setback.
So does the building commissioner at any point, and this is just a, a question, have latitude in his decisions? Or is it just black and white or does he have some discretion?
Well, if he turns it down under one bylaw and then passes it on another, he has to at least show how.
I'm not being facetious. I'm just asking a question. Does he have any latitude?
I think he has latitude to change his decision. But in this case, he based his first decision on one bylaw and didn't reverse it in the second. And both of them, and both of them relate to a 25 foot setback. Which is why the appeal was done originally, so you can do less than a 25 foot setback. So the new letter says it's complies and when you look the bylaw up, it says it only complies if you have a 25 foot setback.
And that second letter is what makes this so problematic.
Because it, it, it's the same thing. It still says you need a 25 foot setback. I think it might be able to easily be remedied if he could even send a notation saying that. The reason the first one didn't comply is this. And the reason the second one complies is it allows you less than a 25 foot setback. For this circumstance that it's specific. But. If we just get references of bylaws and we look them up and the moment you look them up, they both have the same. They both have the same requirement. It, it, it makes it seem like the second letter doesn't comply either. It complies if you just look at a number. If you actually look and see what it says. It hits you with a 25 foot setback.
Alright, so.
Maybe it's workable. Maybe there's an issue with the paper row. Maybe there's an issue with something, but I even looked at the planning. The planning board thing that was attached to the original file because it was a special development due to the hangers. And I couldn't find anything in there that allowed anything to be under a different setback.
Alright, so here's the deal. It's nine thirty. I don't want the board to be spinning its wheels, especially when we don't even have an applicant before us. Requesting this withdrawal. I'm uncomfortable to grant a withdrawal myself. So I suppose I would be voting against the withdrawal. And then I guess putting this on for another date, looking for some sort of clarification because like. Again, with that second letter. I don't know what I'm looking at. I really don't. We have a request before us to appeal the building commissioner's determination. And for the reasons already stated tonight, I don't understand how the building commissioner's second letter applies. Uh, so I will make a motion to not grant the withdrawal. Is there a second?
I can.
Alright, thank you, Ed. Uh, so the motion is to not grant the applicant, applicant, the applicant's withdrawal made by myself and second by Ed.
Alright, but I think you need to decide exactly beyond not granting the withdrawal. What your future action is. Do you intend to continue the hearing to a future date?
Yes, and I don't know to what day because I don't have any available dates in front of me and just seeking some sort of clarification from the applicant. And or the building commissioner. Exactly how they came to the conclusion that.
Um, I guess you could continue it to March eleven and we will just, uh, request. Um, an opinion from the building commissioner. Like I said, you do have a meeting. Um, with the building commissioner prior to that date. So perhaps you can get some clarity either. Through the conversation or in writing.
Very good. Thank you, Noreen. So that's my motion to not with, not allow the withdrawal and to continue to three eleven. Uh, with further clarification from the building commissioner regarding his second letter. Uh, Ed.
Hey, Dan, you're in.
Thank you, Ed. Ken?
Opposed. Ken Foreman opposed.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski opposed.
Bob? Nope, you're muted, Bob.
Robert Tugan, aye.
Alright, so. My motion to not allow the withdrawal, three to two. So it passes? I think so. No? It does not pass. Sorry, Mary, go ahead. Unmute yourself because I'm tired and confused at this point.
You move to not allow the withdrawal.
Correct.
And two, two noes.
Three to two.
Yeses means that it, it is with. It is not allowed to be withdrawn.
Question is, you need a super majority.
Need four to withdraw, so yeah.
Right, so it passes. Simple, simple majority passes. Okay, sorry, I'm just.
That's, that's the question. Simple majority or super.
Simple majority passes. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that because now it's nine thirty three. Alright, uh, now that that's done, voting the minutes from February fourth, two thousand twenty one. Oh, my, yeah, sure. Why don't we do that? Uh, ten minutes?
Make a motion to continue till, uh, quarter of.
Very good. Okay, motion to continue to nine forty five was made by Scott, second by Ken. Ed?
Hey, Dan, you're in.
James?
James Morse.
Mary?
Mary, Mary, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Bob?
Robert Tugan, aye.
And TJ Hurry, aye. So that passes. Alright, first voting the minutes from February fourth, two thousand twenty one. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the fourth of February two thousand twenty one.
Very good. Is there a second?
I read them.
Alright, so the motion was made by Ed and second by Ken. Thank you, Ken. Roll call vote, Ed?
Hey, Dan, you're in.
James?
James Morse.
Mary?
Mary, Mary, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Bob?
Robert Tugan, aye.
Alright, and TJ Hurry, aye. So the minutes from February fourth pass. Okay, board discussion. Uh, Mary, I think you had something.
Yeah, I do. Um, I'd like to propose an amendment to the zoning board of appeals procedural rules and. There, there have been a number of cases where we've gotten sometimes really lengthy things, documents. From applicants. So this would, my proposed amendment would clarify for submission requirements. And what happens if items submitted are not received timely? So in our procedures, four point zero zero talks about applications. So section A, the second sentence reads, applicants shall comply with the instructions published from time to time by the zoning administrator. Which minimally shall require an applicant to submit in advance of a public hearing, all relevant. Legal, engineering and architectural support upon which the applicant intends to rely. So my proposed amendment would also add after. Shall require an applicant to submit at least seven business days in advance. And then at the end of that paragraph would add. Any information provided less than seven minutes, business days in advance will result in a continuance. And to conform to the change, there's also a mention of it because we talk about the one. The, the seven day or one week requirement. Um, it's under the hearing process, which is five point zero three, item E. I think that's E. And it has a note in there that talks about it. And. The only thing. I would also think we should consider is under that applications. There's a, a part at the end of an item and it talks about. A requirement that the information submitted to the board regarding an application shall be available for review by the public in the zoning office. And I think we should add and on the town website. Because that is now up and running and that is a place that the public can go. So I would, those are the two things. And, um, according to our rules, we can, we have to wait two weeks before we can vote on them. But by announcing it here, at least it's been talked about. I can give a copy of what I have talked about to Noreen. In the morning and she can do whatever she's supposed to do to make it. So that y'all can vote on it in two weeks, if that's acceptable.
Very good. I think those are fine changes and if, uh, you can send what you've proposed to Noreen and she can circulate it to us, we can read it. Read it over with hard copies and. Maybe place that on the agenda in two weeks to have a possible.
Suggest, Mr. Chairman, making sure that's on the agenda, giving the public opportunity to comment. It's an administrative law change. We have to give the public comment. Stakeholders to be able to comment before making a change.
Well, actually, I'm not real sure of that, James, because it's our procedures. And we don't need a public hearing for that, not for a ZBA changes to our, these are procedures, not the bylaws.
I'm not disagreeing and I'm certainly, I like the spirit and I would be supportive of, of what you're proposing because I get frustrated with the late changes. I would just hate to see a continuance be granted because of a late submission down the road and then have a legal challenge to the cha- how we change. Because we didn't give proper notice or opportunity heard. I think two weeks under the rules is fine. I just want to make sure that procedurally that we get the information out there so that people see it and we're not going to be collateral challenged later on. If we decide to enforce our own rule.
Bearing on the side of caution, but I definitely understand it, James. Thank you. Alright, um. What did I have? Speaking of the meeting coming up with the building commissioner, Noreen. Noreen circulated a list of, um, talking points, I should say. Uh, if there's anything to be updated, let her know. And Noreen, in terms of the ground rules with the actual meeting itself. Kind of, I don't know if we're speaking in generalities or if any explicit mention can be made to certain properties.
So it's my understanding from town councils that they. Prefer that there not be a specific address discussed, but that, um. Items be discussed in generalities because of the. because of the nature of the effect on a particular property or homeowner, and that they would not have noticed to be present. And, you know, certainly it seems fair that if you granted me a special permit two years ago, and someone didn't like the color of my car, but now I'm being discussed, that's would be a little bit unfair and perhaps uh beyond the bounds of where the board should go. Um, I think certainly for whatever issues the board has, it's certainly acceptable to discuss the concerns or what has happened without identifying a specific address.
All right, thanks for that clarification, Noreen. Um, I I.
So I.
I think it's a conservative approach by town council. Uh, but anyway, Bob?
Yeah, my only question with that is, so if at some point, maybe not during this meeting, but we do need to refer to uh specific permits that may or may not have been enforced. How do we do that? At that point, do we schedule an executive session, naming addresses? Or how does that information on the affected? How does the information on specific properties ever get to someone uh to look into or correct?
So I think if there's a specific property that the board has a specific question about, you know, that can be something that would be sent along, um, perhaps following the meeting. Um, you know, I think that, for example, if there's a particular issue on we'll pick something like the board not receiving a height cert. Okay, so that applies to every application or every decision that you requested height certs for. So even though you might pick my house and say, Jean Noreen, it looks like your house is taller than thirty five feet. Um, that may or may not be true, but, you know, you need to look at, there will be other properties that could be similarly affected. You know, and I think if if there's a particular address that you want to follow up after the meeting, um, we can certainly find a way to do that.
So is that something that would go through you since we aren't allowed to ask directly about specific properties? Is that how it works?
I would assume so. I'm I'm sure at the beginning of the meeting, you know, you can ask Julian if there's a particular question that you, you know.
But how does that work with the open meeting law?
That's my question.
How did the meeting, open meeting, and then there are specific questions that can be asked outside of the open meeting? That doesn't make sense.
It seems like that what I I guess I'm a little confused. If if we wanted to talk about specific things, why isn't it going to be an executive session?
There may not be litigation involved.
But they're, but they're saying.
That's sort of the formal.
Something similar. And litigation is one thing, personnel types of talking about personnel issues is a different thing, right?
Maybe under that criteria.
Yeah, I I think I think it fits. And I don't understand why we as a board should be tied to something that we, it looks like. How can we discuss it if we don't discuss specific cases?
I guess what I would recommend is that the board proceed with this meeting. Um, you know, if you want to raise specific questions at that time, I did bring the board's concerns up about possible executive session, et cetera. Um, that suggestion was deferred. So I think if you want to address these questions directly and inquire as to, you know, if this is the proper way to discuss something, I guess we will proceed with that meeting and.
Well, who who made that decision to defer it? Who?
Uh, there was uh replies from, I believe, town council and the town manager.
Did we get those?
Uh, they were probably sent directly to me because I was setting up the meeting.
So I I would think that it's.
Maybe you could circulate.
Signing, yeah.
Sure, I don't, I did, I did specifically ask based on uh what the board had requested. Um, and uh, there was a separate meeting that was offered that would not include a quorum of the board.
Uh, so when town council gives you their opinion on this kind of a meeting, are they giving you the opinion to us representing us? Or are they giving you the opinion to us representing another entity? And 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 I would only say to the chairman that because there seems to be something a little, I don't know, convoluted about who town council represents, since they can represent multiple parties within the town itself, that is it possible for you to get any input from the state ethics on how something like this works going into a meeting with town council? If they're, if they're giving opinions, do we need to know in advance who their opinion is based on? Because I just, I understand what you're saying, and I understand the generalities, and I understand all that. But if town council is suggesting this is the best way we handle it in generalities, is that advice directly to us? Or is that advice coming to us because that would be his opinion to somebody else that's involved? I I just think we need to know. If town council is giving opinions, who are they representing? Are the opinions coming directly to us, or are they just generalities?
It it didn't even sound like advice, Bob. It sounded like that's the way it's gonna be.
No, Noreen just just mentioned that we can't.
That's how it appeared.
She just said that town council said that we have to do this only in generalities and not make any specifics. So if she said, if if he's sending that to us, is that a directive just towards us, or is that a, you know what I mean? I it's, it's always very confusing to me.
What if we don't agree with the terms to the meeting? What what leg do we have to stand on? If we don't have representation?
No, I just think like what the chairman said, it seems like the advice is being very conservative, and is it being very conservative? Or I I mean, I don't, look, I've never had to deal with this with multiple departments anyway, so I just don't even know what the protocol is in general. But I know that there are specific issues that we may have to bring up, that if you do it in a generality and you describe it, you're gonna know what properties that they involve. So you're not gonna be able to go into some details on these properties.
All right, and we did hit, we're, we are past nine forty five. Um, but Bob, I understand what you're saying, and if you want me to, I can definitely reach out to the State Ethics Commission.
Just to check, I mean, it's free advice and they.
Right, they they run a free, for those who don't know, they run a free hotline. You can run qua- hypotheticals, run questions by them and try to get an answer. Mary?
Yeah, I, are we done with this discussion about the meeting? Okay, Ken says yes. So I just want to make an another little point, which is, um, I, when I went on the website to see for the town, to see the our procedures, okay, um, this has on it something that is dated approved March five, twenty sixteen. My copy that I was given is um November to twenty eighteen. And then I think we made changes to it, unless I'm wrong, about the review. It or is, was that only for um forty Bs for the comprehensive?
Right, we did make a change to the comprehensive permit rules to add the PR engineering, but.
Okay, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I mean, likely both of the documents need uh pretty decent revision. I think that there's some material in there that is, you know, no longer up to date or accurate, so.
So my only thing is, at this point in time, we don't even have an accurate one that was received by the town clerk that's posted, meaning I had one that was dated November twenty eighteen. So I would suggest that we at least update to that version that was approved by TJ and voted by the board. And then, you know, deal with the the changes we need. I remember it was in nineteen that we said we were going to revise the procedures. So it's, it is something that maybe we should put do at some point.
Where we usually do that.
Ones from eighteen ever received by the town clerk? I'm wondering, no?
Apparently not.
Did I sign?
I don't know, it wasn't posted. The last one that was received was dated, that's posted on the the website is, was received March nine twenty eight sixteen, it looks like.
Sixteen, okay. And then what, and the copy you have is eighteen?
Is eighteen.
I can check on it.
Did I sign it?
Well, I don't have a signed version of it.
Oh, okay.
It says that you were present and voting, and it carried unanimously. Ken was present, Ed was present, Paul Murphy was a present, Dugan was president, and Jerry was present, present.
All right, so we'll, we'll have to clarify that. Thank you for bringing that up, Mary.
Sorry.
No, 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 don't say sorry. That was, that was good. All right, uh, anything else for board updates? Future agenda items? Oh, uh, Justin, Justin was asking in in the chat there. Uh, question, is this a specific Zoom meeting? If so, is there a specific date and time? When's the next CBA meeting, meeting with the building department? So uh, the building department meeting is a public hearing with the ZBA. It is, Noreen, is it March sixth?
March.
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, it's it's March four, and for Justin's purposes, um, I was in touch with Tom about that, but we will make sure that we get something further to IT.
Noreen, the same code to get in as we.
Yes.
All right, so building, uh, yeah, meeting with the building commissioner on March fourth, followed by our usual meeting on March eleventh. Meeting adjourned.
Yep. Mary's got another question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
Good night. I just, I just have a really quick one. Honestly, I do. The recodification effort, is that now been stopped? Or is that going to uh go forward, or what's the story?
So it's my understanding that it's still is moving forward. However, we had um some IT problems with the last meeting we had. I don't have a date provided for the next meeting. Um, it's sadly been my understanding that this recodification effort has maybe been going on for some five years now. Is rather astounding. Um, you know, I would think that they would want to be moving it forward to town meeting shortly. Um, so I I guess we will be um pending it, uh, you know, information from the planning directors to next meeting date.
All right, all set, Mary? Okay. All right, anything else? Very good. Meeting adjourned.